Good evening. It's 6:30 and I want to remind everyone that if you have, if you are desiring to speak at one of the items, you need to get your thing filled out and get it turned in. So just reminding everyone that that is a fairly new process that we have. There's cards in the back and if you'll please get them turned into the city secretary. It is officially 6:30. We have nearly a full dais. Mr. Peterson is not going to be able to be with us tonight. He's taking care of some personal things and we wish him the very best as he does that. I'll talk about, we do have a quorum. Many of you know, as per the charter, as mayor, I do not vote, but my presence does count towards a quorum. We only need four people for a quorum, so we have five. We have four voting members and once we have a quorum, we always have to have three votes for something to pass. So just as the votes are going by, I just want to clarify for everyone how that works. So, it is 6:30. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into close executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. 6:32 and I'm calling this meeting to order. Today, we have two wonderful students from Mina Elementary. They are part of the Mina Elementary Art Club and I'm going to call their names and they're going to come forward so Andy gets a chance to take their picture. We have Austin Moylan and his favorite subject is math, which makes me very, very happy, and Kalen Drake and her favorite subject is science. So our community is in good hands with these two individuals that are, attend Mina Elementary and are great students. So if everyone will please rise, they will be leading us in both the U.S. and Texas flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, universal, and universal.
All right, Andy gets to stay. He took the picture of the kids saying the pledge. And if you will remain standing, Pastor Long will lead us in our invocation tonight. Mr. Long serves as a chaplain for our police department and is a very admired member of our community. Pastor Long?
Thank you, ma'am. Please join me in prayer. Lord God in heaven, as we come before you, we want to just thank you for the privilege to live and to work and to play and to pray in Bastrop. We thank you for our community. We thank you for those that are here tonight. We pray especially for our city council, our mayor, our city manager, and those that are officials in our city. And we ask that you give them the wisdom they need for decision-making tonight. Be with those who present this evening. And Lord, we just pray that things will go according to your order and the decisions that are made will be good and godly decisions that will bless us and not hurt us. We pray, Lord God, for the things that you do in Bastrop and the people that work for the city and in our community. We pray for our police department and our first responders. We thank you for the reins that make it much better for everything and we're grateful that you watch over us and keep us safe. We look to you tonight and thank you for this day that you have made and we're going to rejoice and be glad in it. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Long. Okay, we are moving on and, yes, the kids are, it's a school night and they've, hopefully they've already got their homework done, but let's give them another round of applause. All righty, we are moving on. We're at presentations. The first presentation tonight is a proclamation recognizing October as the National Community Planning Month. I've asked Councilmember Jones to read the proclamation. She is the council liaison for our Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation from the City of Bastrop, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation made to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Bastrop, and whereas the city has received a certificate of achievement for planning excellence for 2018 from the Texas chapter of the APA, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional planners of the City of Bastrop and the volunteer members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Historic Landmark Commission, and the Construction Standards Board, and extend our heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment to the public service of these professionals and volunteers.
So Councilmember Jones, if you'll, you can go down and hand our planning folks and I know Colin will take a picture. So on my left, your right, is Matt Jones, who is our new planning director. Yay! We are so happy to have him. And most of you know Jennifer Bills and Allison Land. So you guys act like you like each other and get close and let Colin get a picture. And then Matt or Jennifer, I think you guys may have something to talk to us about.
Yeah, so we'd also like to present, we received the certificate of achievement for planning excellence from the Texas American Planning Association for 2018, and this recognizes that the city is proactive in updating their comprehensive plan, their codes, and that they employ qualified planners to work and then, and have various boards and commissions that are appointed to oversee the growth and development in the city. So we'd like to present this certificate to you.
Yay! Thank you. All righty, thank you guys very much. Matt, did you have any words of wisdom you wanted to share with the community?
I would like to leave you with anything.
Very good. All right. He, I wasn't sure if he was hanging around or not. Okay, the second item is 4B and I am going to read a proclamation about National Night Out. And Chief Alkelton, Chief Nagy, if you'd come forward, please. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live, and whereas National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community, and whereas millions of neighbors take part in National Night Out across thousands of communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, military bases worldwide, and whereas the City of Bastrop plays a vital role in assisting the Bastrop Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Bastrop by supporting National Night Out 2018 locally, and whereas National Night Out provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances, now therefore I, Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim the evening of October 2nd as National Night Out. If you don't already have October 2nd marked on your calendar, please do that. And I think we were up to nine community events. We're at eight community events, I meant. So if there's not one in your neighborhood, go to a neighborhood close to you, but there'll be a lot of things going on that night and we're happy to have that going on. We're now on item 4C and I have asked Mayor Protem Nelson to please read the proclamation about Fire Prevention Week. And we have our new chief, interim chief, Rosales.
We'll just call you chief. Whereas the City of Bastrop is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Bastrop, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally in homes or locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to National Fire Protection Association, that fire departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires. The majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five occur at home each year, and the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to U.S. fire departments was 10% higher in 2016 than it was in 1980. Whereas Bastrop residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported fires in half. Bastrop residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, on every level of the home. Bastrop residents should listen to the sound of the smoke alarm and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. And Bastrop residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and therefore more likely to survive a fire. And Bastrop first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire entries through prevention, protection, education, and whereas Bastrop residents are responsive to the public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. By the mayor's signature, we do hereby proclaim October 7th through October 13th is Fire Prevention Week. I'm going to do it like the mayor.
There you go. Yay! I'm good. And thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciate that. Okay, well, on item 4D, and I would like to ask Curtis Hancock and our custodial workers to please come forward and turn around and face the audience so we can recognize them.
Mayor, I would like to introduce, we've got Alma Rodriguez, we have Josie Castellanos and Charlie Elliott. Angie Perez is not here, but I want you to know, and I say this at the risk of irritating all of my employees, these are three of the hardest-working employees in the city. They absolutely get it done. They are constantly moving. They'll speak to you, they'll be pleasant, but they are moving when they're talking and they're walking. They do amazing, amazing job. They have about 150,000 square feet that they're responsible for. There's just four of them and we couldn't function without them, Mayor. They are awesome.
Absolutely. It's, I, they're a joy to work around, they always have a smile on their face, and Mr. Elliott has recently become a Facebook sensation with the video of him cleaning the outside of the public library. So they clean inside and outside, they do everything, and they're even Facebook sensations. So, I'll take a quick minute. Whereas custodial workers contribute to the important first impressions and the success of any business, and whereas custodial workers operate behind the scenes and are often underappreciated for hard, the hard work they do day after day keeping facilities clean and well-maintained, and whereas the City of Bastrop recognizes the often thankless job performed by these dedicated workers today and as a reminder year-round, and whereas October 2nd has historically been observed as National Custodial Workers Recognition Day, now therefore I, Connie Schrader, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2018, as City of Bastrop Custodial Workers Recognition Day. So we have, let's have a round of applause for these hard-working employees.
And Mayor, I also want to recognize Curtis Hancock. He is in, he supervises the custodial staff and does a good job of keeping them in the middle of the road.
They get a ton of work done and I never could get my boys to make their bed, but that's a whole different discussion. So, let's move on to item 4E and that is my mayor's report. I have a couple of things to go over before we jump into the report. One, I want to recognize Paul Gonzalez, who is a crew leader, and David Juarez, who is a street superintendent. They retrieved a cellphone from a storm drain. They like got the call, crawled in the drain, rescued the phone, and that is above and beyond in anybody's book. And that's the kind of stuff that the people that work for the City of Bastrop do all the time in every job, and I just wanted to publicly recognize them. I also wanted to recognize Cody Reynolds and Adam Jordy for getting some additional certifications. Those things are not easy. They don't have time to study during their jobs, so that is doing extra work, and I see Curtis nodding yes, so I know it is beneficial for the city for folks to have those kind of certifications and I really appreciate them doing that. We talked about the National Night Out and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the hard work that Officer McIntyre does, and she's responsible for pulling together those eight block parties. Then another group of folks I wanted to recognize, and I should have done this, I apologize, Council, I didn't see it until I saw the Ops review. On September 11th, and our last council meeting was on September 11th, and we talked about, it's one of those times for, for this generation, everybody knows where they were on September 11th, and, let's see, one, two, three of our fire, volunteer firefighters put on all of their gear, went to HT Fitness, and climbed 110 stories.
Wow.
Did you know that?
Yeah.
So that is Nick, and don't let me ring his name, Andrea, is it Laux? It's L-A-U-X. Say, Laux? Laux. Nick Laux, Dustin Wobus, and Chris Spooner. So let's give them a round of applause. And I also wanted to recognize, and I, this was, I knew we had a lot, but I didn't know exactly how many we had. The City of Bastrop has 12 railroad crossings, 12 railroad crossings, and a number of them are on the Bastrop High School campus. And on Thursday, September 20th, they had the annual UP Cares and Chief Nagy, was it you on the, look, somebody rode the engine?
Sergeant McNann.
Sergeant McNann and rode the engine, rode the 12 crossings, and coincidentally saw 12 violations of folks that are too close and weren't properly observing that. So they were able to talk to those folks and educate them. We need to be aware of those railroad crossings and not become complacent about them, and I'm so glad that they were able to do that. Okay, let's jump into some things I've been doing the first of September. The upper left-hand corner, yes, that is the perfect grandson, Luke, who is holding the little clubhouse, the other end of the ribbon, and he wants to know why we can't go to ribbon cuttings every Tuesday when I pick him up from school, because he had a great time at that ribbon cutting. Bastrop Photography recently opened, they're over by HT Fitness, and they have had phenomenal business. It is astounding the amount of business that they've done. They've done really good. If you need some pictures taken, you ought to jump on over there. Special thanks to Mayor Protem Nelson for covering for me at the last chamber luncheon. He has, his picture made it in the paper and there he is again, and he got almost a whole hour notice that I wasn't going to be able to make it. I was with my son at Texas Oncology and really appreciate Mayor Protem Nelson doing such a fantastic job. I was also at the ribbon cutting at the Physicians Premier Emergency Room, and you see there's some pictures of their staff. We had the BDC Coffee Chat. 602, the 602 on Main Street celebrated their first anniversary. We're always pleased to have our small businesses be successful. The restaurant business is tough and so we're really excited that they were able to celebrate their first anniversary. We had our quarterly support meeting. The community organizations that we fund meet quarterly and they have really benefited this year from spending some time together. The pictures from the First Friday Art Walk from the first Friday in September was at the Historic Society Museum. They were getting ready for that. And then you can see several of us went to the TML Region 10 Meeting, and TML stands for Texas Municipal League. The Region 10 is the region that we are in and they meet quarterly, and it was really nice to have so many of us at that meeting.
Mayor, to interject, at the TML Region 10 Meeting, our very own mayor was selected as the Region 10 representative on the TML Board of Directors, so congratulations to our mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And the other eye, if we go to the next slide, these are the things that I did from that last picture to this one. Went to the BDC Monthly Meeting. Mike Camerlander is our new executive director and there will be a reception for him on Thursday night, which I'll talk about in a minute. We had our first Building Bastrop Open House at the Convention Center. We had between 70 and 80 public citizens that attended. We've got really favorable reviews and are even making some tweaks to our next open house to make sure we address the public's concerns. The Best of Bastrop County, excuse me, was held at Bastrop Opera House. I'll have some pictures at my next council meeting. There's some folks in this room that won in their category, or, and some of them won, some of them were runners-up for the Best of Bastrop, so that was a neat event to go to. We had our Building Bastrop Weekly Meeting number six, and there was a farewell reception for Dale Lockett last Friday. I was not able to attend, but I heard that it was very sweet and I knew in advance I wasn't going to be able to go and I let Dale know that I wouldn't be there in tonight's city council. Then if we go to the next slide, one of the things I'd like to bring your attention to is the Bastrop County Historical Society. They don't do it every year, it's been two years, but they're having their big garage sale, big community garage sale, which is a major fundraiser for them. The sale will be on November 3rd, but starting October 1st, if you've got free time and you want to go have some, meet some neat people and help them organize, they will be working between October 1st and October 26th. If you contact them, they will get you volunteered. You'll see Thursday is the BDC and Visit Bastrop Welcome Reception. Visit Bastrop is here tonight and I won't steal Chairman Howard's thunder, so I'll let him make an introduction. Councilmember Jones, I know we'll be at the Planning and Zoning Meeting that's this Thursday. It's time for the once-a-month Best Breakfast. There's a few ribbon cuttings and you see some of the National Night Out, some of the things that we've already talked about. You'll get an idea of what I will be doing through October. So that is all of my mayor's report and we're moving on to item number 4F. Councilmember Jones, do you have anything to report? I'm good. Councilmember Ennis?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Rogers?
I just want everyone to know that we're gearing up for the city's Christmas parade and I believe your parade packet is, I believe on the city's website. Yes, Sarah?
Lost Minds Christmas.
Oh, lostmindschristmas.com, so don't forget to get your parade entries. I know you have one ready a while. So get ready, it's coming.
And they must be lit, right? That's the...
Yes, I'm the guard.
All right. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to remove one of them off my list since the city manager already acknowledged the fact that you were elected to the TML Board of Directors.
Thank you.
So I wanted to, that glory, but...
You guys should talk, I guess.
I guess so. After our city council meeting on the 11th, on the 12th, I represented the city at the CapCog's General Assembly Meeting in Austin, and that evening, again, the TML, where the mayor was elected to the TML Board of Directors. Then on 13th, I kicked off our weekly Building Bastrop Meeting here at City Hall. I had to leave early, but I left it in the capable hands of Mr. Palady, Mr. Jove, and Ms. Bills. I left early to represent the city at a roundtable on the future of broadband in rural communities, a very robust discussion from a well-attended event, and extremely valuable input from Senator Watson and Representative Siree toward potential solutions in our rural areas. And then finally, on, on the 18th, I joined council and the staff at the Building Bastrop Open House. There was a lot of people there, a well-turned-out event, a lot of positive interest and engaged discussion on this initiative. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. We're now on item 4G, city manager's report.
Mayor, I'm going to ask Matt Jones to come back to the podium. I am delighted to announce that I've hired a new planning director. Matt has over 11 years' experience in municipal government, most recently serving three and a half years in Argyle, Texas, as the town manager and the community development director. His background includes planning and economic development for the communities of Trophy Clubs, South Lake, and Abilene. He is focused on community engagement and high-quality developments that create a desirable quality of life for the communities he works in. He has obtained his Bachelor of Science degree with the focus on urban and regional planning from Texas State University, and has a Master's of Public Administration degree, and I know this will make Councilmember Ennis's heart smile, from the University of Texas, the Rio Grande Valley. He is a certified planner by the American Institute of Certified Planners and has graduated from the Texas A&amp;M Engineering Extension Service, their basic economic development course. He's married to his wonderful wife, Crystal. They have three children, Collins, Jude, and Caroline, and I think Collins started the first grade...
She did.
...this week and had a wonderful, wonderful time. So they have moved to Bastrop. They are all in and are making that happen. So please join me in welcoming Matt to our team. If you'd like to say something?
Yeah, sure. I'm certainly excited to be here and just looking forward to the opportunity to meet all of you and catch up and really hit the ground running. You know, I think you walk through the doors of the planning department and see some of the accolades and certifications and everything that that department's received over the last few years, and certainly they're very capable and educated and talented and walking into a good, a good bunch, and so I'm looking forward to working with them. You know, when I interviewed for the position, Ms. Humble said that, you know, we're planning the next 100 years of Bastrop, and just being here for five days and tip, you know, dipping my toe in the water, I can, I can really see that to be true. So it's exciting, it's going to be challenging, but I think we're up to it and I'm looking forward to it, and thank you very much and look forward to working with you all. Thanks.
Fantastic welcome, Matt.
Mayor and council, without naming names, I also want to let you know that I have hired a building official who will be starting on October 15th, so at the next council meeting, I will introduce him to you and to the public. So we've made Jerry Palady permanent as our Director of Development and Engineering. We've hired Matt Jones as our Director of Planning, and we now have a building official. And the combined experience in our development department now, and those three individuals, is 81 years of experience. They have 19 certifications between the three of them, 22 years of municipal experience, and four higher education degrees. I think that is extraordinarily impressive for a community of our size and speaks to, I think, the boldness and the vision of this council, that they have provided a level of leadership, that we can get that, that quality of a candidate, excited in who we are, and more importantly, who we're going to be, and want to come to our community and be a part of. be a part of it. So very, very much an exciting time in our organization and some real improvements will be made to our development process in the next 90 days. It will be led by Matt and we're all very, very excited about that.
Congratulations. I know that we've all been wanting those positions filled and it will be better for everyone, for staff, for council, for the whole community. So that's great news. Council, with your permission, I would like to make, we're going to do something a little bit different on the agenda. I'm going to be taking items 4H, 4I, and 6A together. So I'm going to read each of those three items and we're going to group those together so it can be a single presentation. It's, it will make more sense. Received, so I'm reading item 4H. Receive public presentation of Visit Basdrop's Fiscal Year 19 Business Plan and Fiscal Year 19 Budget in accordance with the Destination and Marketing Services Agreement. Item 4I, receive presentation from Visit Basdrop regarding the brand strategy initiative developed by Augustine. And item 6A, receive monthly report from Visit Basdrop. Mr. Howard?
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, thank you. We have a little different presentation tonight. We've got it in a prezi format, so it's not going to quite go exactly the way I hoped, but bear with us. And we have a lot to go over tonight, so I've got all kinds of things to lay out here on my, my table. But the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce our new President and CEO, Susan Smith. And I'd like to give her an opportunity to introduce herself to everybody. This is her second day on the job.
Hi. I arrived on Tuesday night in Basdrop with my daughter. And much to my dismay, my belongings decided not to follow so quickly and have been lost. They found them. And they will be here tomorrow. So I'm very excited to be here, to be a part of the community, to be an active member of the community, and also to make it, make a huge economic impact with Visit Basdrop. And there's some challenges and I'm ready and willing to take them on. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Susan, and welcome.
With that, obviously because of her second day, I'm going to step in and kind of go through everything. And am I clicking here or am I clicking there?
This one first?
Yeah, that one, first budget first. Okay, perfect. So with our budget and with our marketing plan, I just want to reiterate that we had asked the city council to recognize the fact that we have an incoming new director and that we may be in the next 60 to 90 days wanting to amend these. But these are approved by the board. They're totally functional budgets and plans, so I don't foresee any major changes. But at the same time, new director, giving her the opportunity to run it the way she wants to. We may be coming back and asking y'all to approve some amendments.
So Mr. Howard, council, with your permission, I'd like to see some nods. We're, we're not on any, we're not going to be approving anything, but 60 days puts us in the middle of December, which I think is a really lousy time to try to be pulling folks together. If we do 90 days, somewhere between 60 and 90 days, that would put us in right after the new year. I would like to tell the city manager to start looking for an evening that we can have a joint meeting with the Visit Basdrop Board that would give Susan an opportunity to get some time under. And then if they, if you need to make any adjustments to the budget, we can post the agenda where we could approve it that night. And then if we, if folks have any questions, we could just get some familiarity. Is that agreeable with everyone? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. So just with our budget, I just wanted to click through it real quick. So if y'all have any specific questions, I can try to help. But we've got a $353,000 carryover from last year. Our contractual hot funds is 1.112 million. And then with the addition of the special hot funds for special events, we have another 75,000. So we've got a total income of 1.54 for this fiscal year. If we click through to page six, then we can see that our total expenses versus total income, we've got a $203,744,000 difference. By our contract, we've got to have 150,000 in reserve, which we're meeting there. And we're keeping 150,000 dollars, or operational reserve is 150, the regular reserve. We've got a $53,744 extra reserve. So for the most part, everything is accounted for and we're carrying it the way we need to contractually. I just wanted to point that out. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy. Otherwise, we can jump to the marketing plan.
I think we're fine. If folks are looking for this information at home, we're around page 42 in the packet. So everything that Mr. Howard is showing is a part of the packet. One thing that I know you noted, and I just want to make sure that Susan's clear about it, that $75,000 for the special funds needs to be set aside and separate and tracked that way. And I know you guys know that, but I just want to make sure we acknowledge that in public.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Okay, for our sales and marketing business plan, you know, we can go through it page by page, but I think the most important thing that everybody wants to talk about or that we should address is the Convention Center. And so if we jump through to page 18. So in, in page 18 here, we just talk about our inaugural year, our group sales efforts were focused on two goals, partnering with the Hyatt to provide quality convention and meeting leads for them, as well as providing off-site group events, opportunities for Basdrop, to provide a strong sales effort on the behalf of the Basdrop Convention Center to attract groups utilizing room nights in our hotels. Another major effort will be to evaluate our potentials for support, groups, youth, and adult events. We will also represent all of Basdrop's other meeting venues, locations, based on our findings. Significant changes are required. So in our first year, that was what we were going after. And then what we realized was while Visit Basdrop will still be involved and engaged in trying to attract conventions and meetings to Basdrop, our role will be more defined in marketing that potential in partnership with the Hyatt versus having that sales responsibility. This shift significantly decreases the need for us to have high-level sales representative on staff, but rather have someone with marketing background and some group sales experience to support the Hyatt's direct sales efforts. Visit Basdrop will commit to appropriate trade shows to elevate the Hyatt's exposure with Hyatt providing the staff to attend those trade shows. We ended this fiscal year with some of this, just, you know, working with the Hyatt directly and having them represent us at trade shows. And they're very supportive of that endeavor moving forward for that part of the convention sales. Beyond that, our Convention Center, as previously stated, is not sellable position due to the lack of room block and lack of onsite convention hotel. Our role, our role will be modified to provide support for those few opportunities that result in group generating room nights, provide ongoing listings in appropriate meeting publications, and support the effort to attract Convention Center hotel, a Convention Center hotel. Sports has also proved to be highly challenging due to the lack of appropriate sports venues outside of what BISD offers. Visit Basdrop's role will be to support the development of sports venues, to add to the BISD venues. We'll market the destination to those sports groups once the infrastructure is better developed. As previously stated, Visit Basdrop will engage in the motor coach group tour market to try to drive Basdrop as a cost-effective and viable alternative hotel location for this industry sector. Specific goals will be developed once these efforts have begun. With these findings, we have discovered in our first year of operation, as indicated in the above information, Visit Basdrop will operate in this fiscal year more in a marketing role versus a sales role for group business. When and if the convention hotel begins development, along with some other remedies to improve the center, our center product, Visit Basdrop will prepare to significantly modify our current model and move back to a more aggressive sales mode. But until then, the ROI for robust sales effort is not there.
So the way this is posted tonight, we won't be taking action. What, and I'll ask council if they have any feedback for you. But what I would encourage you guys to do when we move to the January meeting, if you want to change the contract, you need to bring the formal verbiage of what you want to, you want, you're offering. What I hear you saying is you'd like to amend the contract.
I don't think that it's actually an amendment to the contract, but we can talk about that if you think it is. I think that we are still, if you look at our budget, we're still marketing the Convention Center. We're marketing the Convention Center in a different way. We're going to be going after smaller groups, not huge groups. We're going to be going after regional events and we're going to be looking at things that aren't necessarily going to trade shows to try to find where we're going to go. And, and in that aspect, we're going to be focusing that way. But that's us up until our new director.
Absolutely.
So that may all change next week, which is why we want to be able to modify this as we...
Which is also why I'm glad that it's 90 days and not 60 days. And the truth of the matter is, if it's 90 days after that and you, you know more than you did, we, we want everybody to learn as we go. And what we don't want to do is waste a single dime. It doesn't, you know, there are folks that get confused and think that the 1.5 million that you're talking about was either sales tax or property tax. And we know that it's not. We know that that's tax that's been collected from people staying in hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts. We know that there is legislative direction of how it can be spent and that's how your contract is geared. But just know that when council starts looking at a budget, when we have that joint meeting, we're going to be going back to the contract. So anytime you can tie out with the deliverables in the contract, I think that'll be beneficial for council. Council, do you have any comments with what he said so far, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yeah, I want to follow up. I mean, I think it's extremely important, especially in light of the events of the past year and the learning process, that we'd never let form overtake the function. And we need to stay on top of that. And that's why I'm in total agreement with the 90 days and y'all coming back with, with some sort of open plan for us to discuss and act upon. I think it's outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ennis?
I want to say that I've had quite a few years of hotel sales experience. And as, as you're finding out, Clint and Susan, as you already know, sales efforts like this are constantly morphing to meet the markets and the times. So I applaud your efforts to take a long look at this and try to hone in on where you're going to get the business, so to speak. So you may have to do that again in another couple of years, depending on what's going on outside our borders. But I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jones?
Thank you. So one thing, if you don't know, you'll know soon, is the council's really wanting to market authentic Basdrop. And one thing that nobody's really focused on, or maybe they haven't, I just missed it, is we have this amazing arena up there across from the state park. And I'm just hoping that at some point, you know, that that's going to become a focus of, of what you're doing. And just wanted to put that out there, that that is a really important part of Basdrop. And we're really hoping to see something happen with that up there.
You're speaking of the rodeo arena?
Yeah.
And we have the Cody Hopkins coming up just in a couple of weeks. So we're definitely...
And I wanted to ask you, who did those billboards? Is that something that...
Visit Basdrop.
I'm telling you, those caught, that's, those grabbed my attention. Those are just outstanding. And I, that's probably, it was impressive, the way that y'all put that together. So thank you for whoever put that together. Y'all did a really good job. Thank you.
I knew when you talked about there's a lack of sports venues outside of BISD. That was why I looked at Councilmember Jones, because I knew she was going to talk about the arena.
The rodeo arena is not, but in, in the other aspects of sports, yes. But yeah, we definitely have a little jewel there.
And the, the little jewel of the Colorado River on the other side. So, okay. All right.
Okay. Colin, can we move to the, yeah, I think we're good with that.
While he's pulling that up, Clint, you want to talk a little bit and remind the community about Augustine and what you're doing?
Yeah. So first of all, I want to just start by thanking the Marketing Committee for Visit Basdrop. I want to thank our Chair, Brenda Abbott, with Brenda Abbott Florable Designs, representing the weddings and special events. I want to thank David Jacobs, General Manager of the Hyatt, representing the Hyatt stake in the Visit Basdrop. I want to thank Sean Plech with Piccon Street Inn, Tom Scott, former mayor, representing at-large, and Nassim Kunsari, representing downtown retail and the art bazaar. All of them put in a huge amount of work to, one, select Augustine as the company. We had over 25 applications from around the nation to get this marketing contract. And so once that selection was made, all of these people put a huge amount of time into working with them to get to what we're going to present you tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that we thank those people for their efforts. With that, we'd like to present our findings. And so Augustine was a company that we hired to do our marketing. And our objectives were develop a brand narrative that will create awareness, drive engagement, and entice action. Educate audiences on the unique amenities and experiences Basdrop offers to change existing perceptions, galvanize the local community story with the visitor experience, and create a cohesive identity between the city of Basdrop and the Lost Pines region. So focus on the why before the what. Authentic experiences are at the heart of it all. Diversity of action activities is key in attracting a wide range of audiences. Travelers are looking for, wow, that's one of those ones that did not translate there with our presentation. So let me click through here. Yeah, no, sorry. Some of them translated that way with the presentation. The spirit of welcome is essential to the U.S. travel industry. So that key there, the spirit of welcome is essential to the U.S. travel industry, that's, that's across the country. And so, you know, that's one of those things that we, we realized in our research was critical. Americans can't get enough of that coveted small-town charm. The lines between meeting and leisure travel are blurring. And then people don't realize the amount of things there are to do in Basdrop. That was a big finding. You know, Augustine did a lot of a, a reach out to the community and realizing how much of the community didn't realize how many opportunities there were here. So the local community members of Basdrop have a deep appreciation, pride, and love for their hometown and seek to share those feelings with the world by bringing visitors into the community to experience it for themselves. Brand strategy. So our brand pillars are really what our branding is going to be built on. So every time that we go and we build an ad, every time that we go and present anything, these pillars are going to be the foundation for how those things are built. And if those ads don't meet these pillars, then they're not, they're not putting the, the goal forward that we're trying to present. So Main Street Heritage, community anecdotes, hospitable, hospitable charm, spirited adventures. So brand positioning, from spirited adventures to historic Main Street charm, our unique experiences blend into creative, create unforgettable stories. Brand promise. We promise to treat our visitors like family, providing them with unique opportunities to create a lifetime of one-of-a-kind experiences and unforgettable memories. So welcome to Basdrop, an original Texas town with a fresh approach to life. All genuine destination, a genuine destination where all-inclusive means everyone's invited. The moment you cross our iconic iron, old iron bridge and step foot on our charming downtown streets, you'll find, you'll feel welcomed, welcome to it all. All, it all starts with a stroll down Main Street followed by an epic outdoor adventure, then mix in some live music and top it off with a mouth-watering meal. And that's just the half of it. We welcome you to make yourself at home, create your next... Sorry. Texas hospitality. And then this is our, this is our tagline, welcome to it all. So after that, then we've got our logo, Visit Basdrop, established 1832. And then we've got the Texas as a signature against a more modern font. And then we've got the iron bridge as the stable, but this is a fluid logo. So a fluid logo means that these images in the background can change and transition based on what we need. So the, the wording stays the same and the image can be adjusted. So this is what we're going to view as our primary, speaking to our heritage, speaking to that iconic bridge that's part of downtown, but also having this very, you know, clean and modern feel to the logo itself. If we go through this, then we have just some basic examples of some variations on this. The B, we're going to, we're going to try to keep that as a primary because the, the B will work very good in marketing conventions and trade shows and be a nice, clean, you know, modern feel. As far as the other ones, including the iron bridge, Augustine is going to engage with the community and hire a local artist to redo these drawings specific by somebody local in the community so that these icons are specific to our community. And in the case of the tree, we're actually going to get a loblawy. So it's, it's a loblawy pine and not just a generic clip-art tree. So this is still in the, in the development phase of how these logos are going to finally... So this is still in the development phase of how these logos are going to finalize as far as what those images are, but also those images can change over time. We can add to them, take away to them as things change. So then this is an idea of just some different color and again, we've got some oddities that are happening in our presentation, but just how it looks on a solid background and how it looks with a little different color scheme. This is an overview of how that will look on, you know, different products and also on like the street signs. And so you can see the diversity that this can be utilized and changed so that you get a kind of different feel on each of these things. And then this kind of gives you another idea of a close-up of how the background icon can change and the tagline, welcome to it all, can be added in. And then this is how that looks against all of our local, or not all, but a lot of our local, you know, competition, if you will, and how their current logos look compared to ours. And so Bastrop, Texas, welcome to it all, Visit Bastrop. So that's what we got.
Great job.
Council, any comments for him?
Great job.
Same here. Great job.
Thank you.
Really like it.
Awesome, awesome. And we had 100% approval by the board on this direction, so every board member voted for this.
It's not in the packet and council was looking for that, so when you get the oddities straightened out, it would be great if, Colin, we could somehow get that uploaded to the packet so that the public can see at some point.
I'm sure I can get it in a PowerPoint tomorrow and I could get that emailed.
Yeah, it's not a big deal, but I just know folks would like to have it to look at and share with friends.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, Sarah and I were talking about how absolutely impressive this is, particularly when you tie it to the vision of Bastrop that y'all have set forth in the community. And the beauty of this is, in my opinion, not only what Clint said, but that makes Bastrop whatever you need it to be. And we talk a lot about people come to our community for the nostalgia. They came here because they went to the state park as a child, or they came here because it has a small-town feel of how they used to go visit their grandmother. And so the connection point, we're now beginning to get some synergy between the vision, the way we're branding it, and the way we all can relate to it that is so profoundly powerful in its flexibility, but yet its continuity. So I applaud y'all. Job well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Susan, we're hoping you like it.
She did like it.
She was actively involved in the three, four weeks leading up to today as we were having the final meetings. She was at teleconferences and looking at the slideshow with us over the internet, so yeah, she's been involved.
Good.
We appreciate that. Okay, so rounding that out, on her second day here, I'll just go ahead and hand the president's report over to her and let her try to figure out what's... Actually, I'd like to just kind of briefly summarize the stuff there real quick. We don't have to even go through it on the slideshow unless you want to.
And it is in the packet, so if the public wants to go through any details, it's available.
But the specifics I just wanted to touch base on is we're continuing to have our focus meetings with the different groups that we represent. So to date, we have had five meetings with arts, downtown, let's see, arts, retail, restaurants, nightlife, weddings, venues. Yeah, I think that's it. We have two more scheduled in the next 30 days and so those are moving forward. It's really helping, I think, to have that conversation with the community and get people understanding what we can do, what we can't do, what we are doing, you know, that strategy. And then also at our joint workshop, we realized that we had a position that was not filled contractually and didn't exist in our bylaws, so we amended our bylaws so that we could create that position, so that we can have that representative representing films. And we now have that representative representing films and I have just forgotten her name.
Mindy Rannick.
Mindy, thank you, representing New Republic Studios. And she was at our first board meeting last week and so we're very excited to have that position filled and the whole board is filled, you know, all positions filled, so...
I've gotten to know her over the last few months and I think she'll be an incredible asset to your board. She really knows her stuff and gets things done and Susan, if you haven't already met her, I think you'll really enjoy getting to know her. That's great.
Awesome. So we're very excited and we're moving forward as best we can.
Council, do you have any other questions for Mr. Howard or Ms. Smith? Councilmember Ennis?
How soon can I get a T-shirt?
Ah, soon.
I'm kidding.
We'll give you the first one.
He really wants the bottle of wine, but he's going to ask you about that later, right?
Yeah, I want that too.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, did you move?
Just real quick, Clint, you epitomized the volunteer, the community volunteers, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's just give Clint a round of applause. Thank you so much. We look forward to meeting with you, but Susan, particularly if you need anything from City Hall, we are across the street and we are in this together. Please let us know what we can do to support you. Really enjoy it. And welcome aboard. Glad to have you guys. And you won't hurt our feelings if you're leaving. Don't think that you have to stay for the whole meeting, so you're welcome to, but don't feel like you have to.
Y'all have a great night.
Thank you so much. Y'all be careful. Okay, Council, we're going to go slightly backwards to item 5A, discuss the wholesale water partnership agreement between Aqua Water Corporation and the city of Bastrop. The partnership agreement was not in the packet. The city manager sent that out late yesterday evening and she's got a PowerPoint that you don't need to look in your packet, it's not in there, but we're going to give her an opportunity to go over the agreement.
Mayor and Council, as I indicated to you via email last night, this is a very much a work-in process and so we got the final agreement from Aqua last night. Our attorney, Trey and I, are in the process of reviewing it, so some of the details may change, but I'm going to hit the high points to kind of help put some perspective to this. One of the things that I think is important to start the conversation is, why is there a need for a partnership with Aqua? And so Senate Bill 511 that was filed in February of 2011 created a streamlined expedited release for, Colin, are you playing on the computer? An expedited release for the certificate of certification and necessity. And essentially, if you're a landowner that has 25 acres who are not currently receiving water and wastewater service and are located in one of 33 counties, of which Bastrop is one, you can petition the TCEQ to remove your property from the existing CCN. There's no requirement to notify the existing CCN holder or that an alternative service provider is even available or capable of providing service. TCEQ is required to grant a petition for streamlined expedited release within 60 days if all of the applicable requirements are met. Any new retail provider that's required, is required to compensate the incumbent utility for any property that the TCEQ determines is rendered useless or valueless. So if there was some value to the CCN when TCEQ agreed to decertify it and it was picked up by a new retailer, there would be a process that would be followed to put a value on it and the new company that assumed the CCN would then have to offer a payment. All of this is important because Aqua had worked with Representative Siria to sponsor a bill to modify this process back in 2017. The city of Bastrop opposed the bill, so I'm sure you can appreciate the quandary that Representative Siria found himself in. So we were summoned, for a lack of a better word, to Representative Siria's office and essentially were instructed to work out some form of an agreement. I just want to remind all of you that I was only here three weeks at the time. I didn't have a history, didn't know who Aqua was, didn't know who Dave Murray was, and I was sitting next to him at the meeting. So after we were pretty much told we needed to learn to get along, I introduced myself and invited him to a meeting. And that was the beginning of understanding the situation and working toward a resolution. One of the challenges with being able to decertify as a landowner, particularly if there are several water providers in the area, is it allows developers to pit one provider against the other. And that's never productive. One of the challenges that exists is how fire flow is provided. Aqua can provide fire flow, but they do it through a volume of water. So that means that the developer has to buy a lot of water in order to pressurize the system to provide fire flow. And so our system, because we meet on the edge of Bastrop, there is a logical connection point between our system and Aqua's, and our system is pressurized. It was built differently and so it's easier for us to provide fire flow in a cheaper method. One of the things that was really an aha moment for Dave and I is I appreciate a city manager that I have similar challenges that he does. And that is, is that Aqua requires the sale of their water as collateral for the loans that they have with the USDA to fund their system. And so once we established the reason Aqua cared passionately about this, it was able to then figure out a way for us to be partners. And so we came to appreciate that this is an opportunity for us to expand our water CCN to match our wastewater CCN through a long-term wholesale water agreement. For those of you watching at home, our wastewater CCN is three times the size of our water CCN. And so that was really the long-term perspective. As we've taken the journey the last 16 months to address long-term water supply and what's the right answer around water, we realized that the ability to get from point A to the long-term solution, there has to be a bridge because it is possible between now and when the water plant is built and goes online that we may need some additional water because we have peaked, or we may need some redundancy in the system because of the way our system is built. So for us, it provides an immediate water supply redundancy and helps us be able to make the right long-term decision and not have to meet short-term demands that compromise that long-term vision. So that was a really important component. And we talked about this at the March 24th work session and this agreement really was a cornerstone for some of the long-term decisions that y'all felt comfortable making because we're just not going to be out of water because Aqua's going to be our wholesale provider. So we approached the partnership with these goals in mind. From a short-term perspective, we would execute a wholesale water agreement for system redundancy and manage our peak flow demands. We would execute a partnership agreement when a property owner decertifies an Aqua's CCN outside of the city limits and approaches us. We will have an agreement that says if we get approached, we're going to buy water from Aqua. So there's not going to be any pitting us against another. That's fine. We're happy to run Aqua's water through our system and charge it, but at the end of the day, you're going to have to buy Aqua's water so that they don't lose the collateralization of their USDA loans. And so really what that will do is to create a one-stop shopping for developers. Really, I hope, expedites the process for some of the development right outside of the city limits and our ETJ. The long-term, and so before I move on, the proposed agreement that we're talking about that you've been providing covers the short-term elements of this. We talked about the long-term and that is, is that as we annex and move into Aqua's CCN where their CCN matches our wastewater CCN, that we may want to acquire existing infrastructure and their customers. That's very different than the short-term. The short-term is, is if we get approached by a developer that's never had service, we will service them with a wholesale contract. But long-term, it might be as we expand, we want to, again, have the water CCN be the wastewater CCN. And that creates a different conversation because it would require us to buy their system, provide maintenance, and it's a complicated conversation. So we all agreed that we were open to that conversation. Today was not the day to have it and when it happens, that would constitute an amendment to the proposed agreement. So just want to manage expectations that it's not off the table, it's just not today's conversation. So what are the terms of the partnership agreement? It represents a 50-year partnership. It would provide an opportunity for the city to purchase water from Aqua for our own use to bridge increased usage above the 2.8 million gallons per day until our centralized water plant is constructed. If approached by a developer seeking to decertify Aqua's CCN and our wastewater CCN and the city chose to accept that CCN, that's really important because just because we get approached, there may be reasons that are cost prohibitive, it just doesn't make sense, so we respectfully have the right to say no. But if we agree to accept the CCN, then we would work with Aqua on that purchase. And so again, that ensures Aqua can meet the collateral obligations of their USDA loans. It provides fire flow cheaper than Aqua can provide it. Again, that's a question of you have to buy more water through Aqua to achieve that fire flow. It removes the ability of the developer to shop the deal and it allows the city's water CCN to potentially mirror the wastewater CCN. At the end of the day, it's a win-win-win. It's a win for Aqua, it's a win for the city, and it's a win for the developer. And truly, this is probably not what Representative Siria expected when he sent us off to figure out how to play well with each other, but I think it really speaks to what you can do when you figure out the why. And the why for both of us was not in conflict. And so I think this will be a precedent-setting way to do business, hopefully in the other 33 counties that are doing this. So the terms of this agreement, and I do want to acknowledge this, for the most part, this agreement functions as a wholesale water purchase agreement because in all cases, we are going to be purchasing the water. It's what we do with it that becomes the question. So it provides a process for Aqua to apply to the PUC to amend their CCN, to decertify, and then amend the city's CCN to accept the certification. So there's process language in there. All costs associated with this partnership agreement, whether it's the point of service studies, the connections, the CCN amendments, will be included in the city's wholesale water agreement that you will adopt that will become our standardized agreement and it will be paid for by the customer who benefits from the service. Said a different way, the rate payers of the water system are not going to be subsidizing these costs. So if you're the reason for the cost, you'll pay for the cost. The majority of the contract language, again, functions as a wholesale water purchase agreement. It covers definitions, it covers maintenance and curtailment. Curtailment is just a fancy way for saying if we got in a drought situation, there's a process that we would have to follow their drought plan, but chances are very good if we were in a drought, we would also be in a drought, so we would be doing those conservation measures. Rates and adjustments of rates. The agreement has a 60-day notice provision in it. They wanted 30, but we explained the process and that is, they need to notify us that they're going to be raising their rates. We have to put that in our wholesale water model and then you will have to adopt rates that are then passed on to our wholesale water customers. So there will be a 30-day notice provision in our wholesale water contract so that the process just kind of... so that the process just kind of flows through the way that needs to happen. Billing and payments. Essentially, what we do is we pledge the revenue from the wholesale water agreements to cover the cost of the water purchased from Aqua. But we won't have a wholesale water agreement with someone that isn't already using Aqua's water. So that seems like a very reasonable commitment that if we're selling your water, the water revenue from that goes to pay the bill. Conservation measures will follow Aqua's requirements. And I think there's an opportunity for us to have a single conservation policy that we can work on so that we're not confusing folks in the area that we're all marching in lockstep on how to do that. If there is a dispute that's not covered by the PUC jurisdiction, and the Texas Water Code covers a lot of how things are managed, then we agree to non-binding mediation. As with all things, there are default intermination provisions. There are your typical breach, convert, language. If the agreement is terminated prior to 50 years, we agree to pay Aqua for any stranded investment. So let's talk about what stranded investment looks like. With a 50-year agreement, Aqua is essentially agreeing to be able to meet the demands of the water that we buy. So just like we are today, making significant investment in water and wastewater treatment facilities, they too are going to make investments to supply the water to the wholesale water agreement. So, if that agreement were to end prior to them being able to get their investment back, then we would be obligated to pay that. There is a one-year from the date of expiration requirement if there is an intent not to renew. But if no noticing is given, then it automatically renews for an additional 20 years. One of the things that is important to note, it's obvious if you understand water. It's not obvious if you don't. Because we have a small 11-square-mile water CCN, we are purchasing water rights based on build-out for our water CCN. So, this agreement makes the water rights for our wholesale water customers Aqua's responsibility. So if we chose not to renew this contract in 50 years with Aqua, then the city has to be able to provide the water from another source. And right now, we're not planning to be that source because our water CCN that we really have to provide the water for is already defined. And y'all have been very clear in your intentions to set that up for success so that we can have a centralized water plant. So we don't see this provision as problematic based on the vision of this council. But we also recognize that councils change, visions of the community change. And if that were to happen, then they would need to give notice, but hopefully, they'd be planning well in advance of that. So when that provision was executed, they would have an alternative water source. Where do we go from here? We received feedback from you this evening. Aqua is hopeful to schedule to vote on October 1st. That is dependent on how comfortable their board is with the language. At this point in time, the attorney and Dave McMurray are very supportive of this language. We need feedback from you this evening, and we will put it on the Aqua, I'm not on the Aqua, on the October 8th agenda for you to approve. And then sometime in October, we will hold a press conference for ceremonial signing because this really is a really big deal. And we certainly want to show, again, how partnerships matter. And this is one where we all can win from. Our attorney is working on draft wholesale water and wastewater agreements. We're hopeful, and I do say hopeful, that on October 8th, we can bring you copies of those drafts so that you begin to see what they're going to look like and be able to make comments on that. Once we have the specifics of the agreement worked out, we will provide those to our rate consultant. And sometime in the middle of November, we will be bringing to you a conversation about water and wastewater rates. There will need to be some adjustments made to the ordinance. It's a very complex ordinance, which really is necessary. So we need to clean that up. It'll make better sense for our customer. It will certainly make better sense operationally. But you will need to adopt a wholesale water and wastewater rate in December as a result of that meeting. We do have a developer that has been patiently waiting for the Aqua deal to go through, for us to have some water and wastewater agreements. But we also need to have rates to charge them. So our hope is by that first meeting in December that the Aqua agreement will be approved, we'll have water wastewater agreements, we will have a cleaned-up water wastewater ordinance that manages our rates. And you will have established a wholesale water and wastewater rate category. At this point in time, we don't believe that water and wastewater rates will go up next year other than the rate increase that you are approving as a part of the budget process. The one thing that is important to acknowledge, because we all know this, next year, we're going to be designing the water and the wastewater plant. And so, we've talked to the rate consultant that sometime around the March-April timeframe, we will have another water wastewater rate meeting with you. Because by that time, the engineer's estimates and the construction schedule should be, hopefully, at the 30%, maybe even at the 60% mark for the wastewater treatment plant. And we will be able to make some adjustments to the rates and have a conversation, get some direction from you. And then that will give us ample time to educate the customers on where we're moving. So, at this point in time, I've shared with you where we are and am happy to answer any questions or address any concerns.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Jones?
I just am so impressed. Thank you, Linda. And I think that what you've done with this is why we hired you. And, you know, just you talking about how you see this as maybe being a model for the other counties, I can see that lots of other things that you're taking care of with the city, it's the same thing. And thank you very much.
I appreciate that, but it was a team effort. Trey and Curtis have been very much involved. Erin Savelia with Allen's Law Firm have been involved. But not only us coming to the table, it really took Aqua, Dave McMurray, David, the engineer, and his team. We have, we have met no less than 10 times. Very open, very transparent, really understanding what the common goal is. Have met with their attorney, Ty. So it's been a lot of work of a lot of people pushing toward a situation that's win-win. So thank you.
Well, thank you for your representation in that.
Counsel, any other questions? Shockingly, I have a few. There aren't any exhibits, so I would really like to see all of the exhibits.
So would we. So they are being worked on between Ty and Erin, but we have not seen any of them.
And I too saw the 60 days for any change in the rate. But I'm also seeing that if they do that, they can't be changed again for another year. So it's not like you can, every 60 days, be raising the rate. Am I reading this correctly? The intent is you can only raise the rates once a year?
That is the intent. I would say that unless there was some kind of catastrophic event, and a, for instance, would be, and it won't really apply here because of the way they structure their water rate. But there could be some extenuating circumstance that we could bring something to council, and you would feel compelled to go ahead and grant it because it was extraordinary. But the real intent is to not jack the race up every time you turn around.
So if there was an extraordinary event like that, it would require an amendment to the contract. Isn't that correct, Erin? Because this is written to where it can only be done once a year. Is that correct? That's how I'm reading it. Not having gone to law school, that's how I'm reading it.
I will, I will visit with Erin. The conversation that we have had the most, well, we've had the most lengthy conversation about is the force majeure language in there. And you can, what-if, the scenarios to death. And so, that's why you sent me being hesitant. If we had not spent copious amounts of time debating the rule coming to an end, I feel real comfortable telling you, yes, ma'am, it's only going to be that one thing. So it may require that amendment for that extraordinary thing. But the intent is, once a year, we set rates and we move on.
I'm under Article 4, rates and compensation. And it says that the rates shall, that if the adjustment, it shall occur no earlier than 12 months following the date of the last adjustment to rates. So that's where I'm getting that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, I also, I can't get to your 50 years. I see that the effective, it shall remain enforced for a period of 20 years. And then you have to give a one-year notice. And if you don't, it goes for another 20, but I can't get to 50.
We got a secondary agreement today, and, let me put my glasses on.
Mary, are you reading from the agreement?
Yes, sir, I am. I'm on pages 38 and 39.
We don't have that.
Yes, it was emailed to everybody Monday, Monday evening. When she sent the packet on Friday, she said she would send it Monday, and she did.
The terms should be 50 years. The copy that you have is 20. The markout is 50. So the final agreement you will get will be a 50-year agreement.
I'm just trying to, you know, and I will admit that even though you emailed it to us last night, I didn't spend time with it till this afternoon.
And so, let me say this about that. What I have represented to you, whether it's the words on the page or not, is the intent of the agreement. And when you get a final agreement, what I have represented to you will be the words on the page.
Okay. Okay. Counselmember Rogers?
Will we be able to get that way before the voting on the 8th, you think?
Yes, ma'am. They are taking that on Monday to Aqua. So Erin is reviewing it tonight. Trey has spent the afternoon with it. I will look at it tomorrow. And our hope is, is by Friday, that we will have something that I can then send out to y'all to look at. And hopefully, we'll have the exhibits by then.
Okay. It's just a large agreement, so it's really hard to.
Yes, ma'am.
Do it before today.
And I would have been super sensitive if I was asking you to vote on it tonight. But this is just kind of a context. We owed you a conversation, wanted to begin to introduce it and talk about what it was going to be. So when you got it, you knew what to do with it.
Okay. I just wanted plenty of time to go over it.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselmember Ennis, do you have a question or a comment? Okay. Okay, anybody, May Proton Nelson, anything?
Well, certainly getting it last night, I've not had a chance to review it as everybody else has said the same thing. But I'd like to reserve the opportunity to provide questions or comments after I have a chance to go through it. Thank you.
The other thing that I noticed, noted on page 21 with the reasonable rates is that the intent is for the rates to be just and reasonable. While I appreciate, you know, from a policy standpoint, obviously, we want to protect the investment that the taxpayers and what their taxes go in with the system. But we're also wanting to be fair and reasonable with our developers because as they come in with a project, we need them to pay their fair share, but we don't need to be unduly punishing them. There's a fine line to travel there. And I just want to make sure that, as I noted, the intention, we're trying to not burden our existing users, but we are equally not trying to set rates to the point that no one wants to do business with the city of Bastrop.
So, two things. First of all, the goal is to be more advantageous than a mud. So it's in our own best interest that we don't set water rates that are so high. It's better to have a mud. The point of doing this is to provide a cheaper alternative than a mud. The PUC offers a process to challenge rates. And so, if the Aqua were to establish rates that we thought were unjust and unreasonable, there is a process that we could appeal to the PUC and require a rate study to be done. So that's the great equalizer in water rates.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other questions? Okay, and I'll tell you, I will tell you that when I was first elected, there weren't a whole lot of meetings going on between the city of Bastrop and Aqua. And I'm very impressed in a year that we've had 10. I think it's, if it wasn't beneficial for both entities, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have an agreement in front of us, and we wouldn't be working on it. So I'm glad to see us partnering with the folks around us. Please, through the city secretary or whoever, let counsel know when the finalized contract and the exhibits are available. It's a lot to take in, and I know everybody's going to want an opportunity to review that.
Ma'am, and Counsel, I will upload it to Dropbox and send you an email that it's available once we get a finalized copy. And if there isn't enough time, it just will not be on the October 8th agenda. There is nothing driving this other than it is a precursor to some other things that have to be done. So if October 8th turns out to not be the right date, then it'll just bump to October 22nd.
And in all fairness, there's, I know of at least one developer, and I can think of two, that have been waiting right at a year for, you know, we got to do it right. But when you say patiently waiting, it's not something they've only been asking about the last couple of months.
They've been waiting a decade, yes, ma'am. We appreciate that.
Just to make your thing, it is October 9th. Is our council meeting, is the 9th, correct?
It's Tuesday. If it's not the 8th, it's the 9th. My apologies. And then 14 days after that would be the second one.
Correct. Tuesday's the 9th. Okay, Counsel, it is 7:57. I don't think the unaudited monthly financial report's going to take very long. Are you guys okay if we keep going? And then we'll take a break after that. Ms. Waldron, you can start coming forward on item 6B. Receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending August 31st, 2018. Ms. Waldron?
And here we go. Good evening. This is the comprehensive financial report for August 31st, 2018. And it won't take very long because it's all green, other than a few items I will address. All our economic indicators are showing positive this month. I go through a series of various sites, Texas National, and try to get this information updated each time I do this report. And so we're all to the positive. I wanted to point out my noteworthy item this month. We did get obligated, the Gill's Branch drainage damage that occurred during Hurricane Harvey, that FEMA money has been obligated. So we will be moving forward with that repair. On our revenue, all funds report, every fund is in the positive except for the water wastewater debt and the impact fees. And they're related. The impact fund, what I budgeted for was based on the amounts that came from the impact report. So it was projected how much revenue we would generate. We have not met that revenue because impact fees are a little unpredictable depending on development. And that flows into the debt service fund for wastewater. So if I'm low on the impact fund, I'm going to be low on my transfer into the wastewater debt service fund.
But be abundantly clear that the fund balance and the debt is healthy. This is not an issue of not being able to meet any of our responsibilities. This is solely a function of variance in forecasting.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, that fund has a fund balance that's healthy. We've been ramping up and putting additional funds into it to prepare for the debt service we know is coming down the pike. This is purely just a forecast actual in that fund. This is purely just a forecast actual in that fund. As far as the expenses are concerned, all of the funds are also positive. The Hunter's Crossing PID fund still relates to the legal bills that we had this year. I believe that next year, we will be able to do an amendment, and that fund will start looking a little bit healthier. General fund revenue to expenditures is at a positive 4.5% between revenue and expenditures. That fund is running very well. Sales tax revenue, the forecast actual is 6.2% over forecasted. But I like to point out, the year-over-year is actually a 10% increase from where we were last year, so. Property tax revenue is 1%, right on the money. What we forecasted and projected in actual is just 1% over forecasted, so it's a pretty tight forecast. Our wastewater fund revenues and expenditures is a 27% net positive. A lot of that has to do with expenditures that were salary savings or capital that just has not occurred yet, that we budgeted for, and so that's kept them a little high. Their revenue forecasted, I have my number in red, because I caught an error today, so the 4.6 is the correct cumulative forecast, instead of the 4.2 that's in the packet. But the 74% is a correct number, so we're just a little under 2% actual over forecast.
I think it's 74,000, right? You said 74%?
Yeah, sorry, 74,000. The electric fund revenue to expenditures is just a little under 11% to the net positive in the fund. And the revenues in that fund are 4.3% higher than forecasted at this point, so they're running very well. Hotel occupancy tax, they are just right at breakeven, just a little bit less than 1% net positive. So as far as the revenue in that fund, just 0.5% actual over what I have forecasted. But I do want to point out that year-to-date, over last year where we were, we're almost 80,000 above where we were last year, so. Just got the legal fees in there for your perusing. Any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
I wanted also to address a question you had. The last time we updated water wastewater rates was November of 2015.
2015?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And I think Ms. Sumble has covered our timeline on the rates.
Do you know what, how much we increased? Was it the base rate that we increased?
It was across the board, so it was, I think, either 3% or 5%. They were doing like regular increases each year up to that point. That was the last time we applied, like a percentage of cost.
And then after 15, then there hadn't been any increases at all?
No.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Counsel, anymore? Thank you very much, Ms. Waldron. City Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, ma'am, no one has signed up.
All right, counsel, with your permission, we, since no one has signed up for citizen comments, we will, it is 8:04. We will take a quick five-minute break and come back with the consent agenda. It is 8:04, and we are in recess. All right, it's 8:10, and we are back in session. Madam Secret, well, first, city council, do you have any items? We have items 8A through 8E. Is there any item that you want pulled from the consent agenda? Is there anyone in the audience that wants an item pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the September 11th, 2018 meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-20 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit for a stop for Ascension Seaton Bastrop Hospital on Lot 1 of Bastrop Grove subdivision, Section 1, located at 630 West SH 71, in area zone C-1, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in exhibit A and exhibit B, setting out conditions, including a severability clause, and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-19 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, titled Traffic and Vehicles, Article 12.04, titled Traffic Schedules, Section 12.04.004, titled Scheduled, three stop signs, repealing the provision that established stop signs located at the intersection of Farm Street and Chamber Street, and repealing all prior ordinances that are in conflict therewith, as attached in exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact enactment, effective date, repealer severability, and proper notice and meaning. Item 8D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-18 of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, titled Business Regulations, Article 4.08, titled Commercial Filming, Sections 4.08.002, titled City Control Authority of City Manager, 4.08.004, titled Application, 4.08.005, titled Use of City Equipment and Personnel, 4.08.006, titled Use of City Property, 4.08.007, titled Special Equipment and Vehicles, 4.08.008, titled Hours of Filming, and 4.08.009, titled Notification of Effective Property Owners, adding the provision that allows the city manager to assign and designate, to act on his or her behalf, and repealing all prior ordinances that are in conflict therewith, as attached in exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact enactment, effective date, repealer severability, and proper notice and meaning. Item 8E, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-21 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, creating a master fee schedule, attached as exhibit A for the city of Bastrop, to transition all fees listed in the Code of Ordinances, Schedule A, fee schedule, to this master fee schedule, excluding Sections A 13.02 and A 13.07, providing that other fees not listed but now changed pursuant to other ordinances and resolutions shall remain in effect until transferred to the master fee schedule by amendment, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, if anyone would like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson. I have a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any discussion? I have one comment on 8E. I just want to remind the city manager that when we discussed the first reading of the master fee schedule, that we talked about adding a potential work item for doing legal lot research systematically and contracting that out. I don't want to change anything about that master fee schedule, but I don't want to lose that work item.
Is that something y'all want to add and find funding for and amend the budget? Because it is not in this year's work plan. I had it for 2020.
I think it's fine, as long as it just, that's especially why I wanted to talk about it, because that's a year out.
Yes, ma'am. I have it noted for next year's work plan.
Great. If you find extra money and extra people and extra time, it'd be okay to do it sooner, but I doubt that's all going to happen.
I need that to do what you've already promised to do, ma'am.
Details, details. Okay, so, any other discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously, and I want to note, Chief Altgeld, I don't know if it'll be Councilmember Jones or myself that'll be calling you first, wanting to know when the stop signs are down on Farm Street at Chambers, because we just approved it, so.
Curtis, when is it going to be done?
Thank you. All righty, because she doesn't want to get the call. And council, the next time Councilmember Jones has to stop at that, she's going to say, "I know I voted on that." And she's not going to want Chief Altgeld giving her a ticket for running that stop sign.
So Curtis, if you stop on the way home and take them down, it'll be all right.
All right, counsel, we're at the bottom of page 3. We're on item 9A. Counsel, you had items that were placed at your dais. I want to remind you that this is the item that counsel has previously said we would waive our normal procedures, and we would know that we don't have things in the packet. Ms. Bills and several other folks are having meetings on Tuesday. We're doing this as a way to expedite folks that are trying to get exemptions and get things approved. You had a packet of information that started with exemption application. They were at your dais. Before Ms. Bills speaks, does it, I know it's really last minute, and no one's going to be upset. Does anybody need a few minutes to look over? Everybody okay? All right, Ms. Bills, I will read the item. Consider action and approve resolution number R 2018-96 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, making determinations regarding certain project-specific exceptions and/or exemptions as provided by emergency ordinance 2018-1, Section 8, Temporary Mortarium, and emergency ordinance 2018-2, Section 7, Emergency Drainage Application Rules. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So the request before you tonight for an exemption is for the Seventh-day Adventist Church, which is located at 3300 East State Highway 21. So this is actually on the very edge of the city limits, on the east side of town. So they're requesting an exemption under the ordinance. They have provided the engineered statement, engineer's statement, that they'll have no impact on the upstream or downstream surrounding properties. They included a site plan that has both the pre- and the post-developed drainage conditions for this site. Additionally, this site is a 14.163-acre site, and largely because of the Houston toad habitat, they can only disturb up to one acre. So they are only, with the proposed amendments to their site plan, they're only having 0.558 acres of impervious cover, which comes to be a little less than 4% impervious cover over the whole site.
Okay, before she goes on, counsel, can you find all the things that she has listed? The engineer's document is on the backside of the waiver checklist. Okay, everybody's on the same page. Keep going, Ms. Bills.
And then the relevant parts of the site plan. This is their, kind of hard to see, it's kind of tiny. They have the pre-developed impervious cover and then the post-developed impervious cover calculations for the entire drainage area, which is larger than the site. So the entire area is a 27.10-acre site. So the site drains to a pond on the property, and then when that fills up, it goes into pipes underneath 21 that then go to the state park, is how that drains. And then you can kind of see on the aerial that this is the disturbed area of the site, and the rest is left naturally wooded. And this was, this is an existing site, and this is an amendment to their site plan to add additional buildings. So there already are some buildings out there.
Jennifer, is this in the city limits or in our ATJ?
It's in the city limits, just on the very edge of the city limits. The city limits line is right there.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was asking her. Is this in the city limits?
It's a ZC2, and it's on the very far edge of the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, and the applicant, and the representative of the property owner are both here. Do you have any questions of them, too? And the mechanism for this, under the exemption requirements, is they're asking for a waiver. The waiver requires you to build any infrastructure, that would be, additional infrastructure would be necessary to handle drainage that's coming off of your lot. And since this isn't creating any additional drainage concerns off their lot, then they're asking that there be a waiver and acceptance of their plans.
The prescribed process was followed?
Yes.
Everybody adhered to everything we did, we were supposed to do. I move to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson. I have a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any further discussion? There's a race to the microphone down there, I think. With no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously, and thank you, Ms. Bills, for presenting the information. Okay, we're on the top of page 4, 9B. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2018-92 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Bastrop and Bastrop County Emergency Services District Number 2 for Fire Protection Services, attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establishing an effective date. Chief Rosales?
Mayor, counsel, city manager, this is building on our agreements, just like y'all were doing earlier with the aqua agreement, building our relationship with Bastrop County ESD Number 2 and making it grow. They need, providing them resources in the southern part of their district area. And so this is just adding to the already auto aid agreement that we have with them, and this is building on it. Any questions about it?
Why don't you explain what it is?
Sure. It is the, it's an agreement, we're going to basically share resources. We're going to share the fire station number 2, which is located in Tahitian. They are, I believe, going to bring an apparatus to this, to the station, so that it provides coverage for them, as well as it'll provide coverage for the city when we need mutual aid. The, I think that's pretty much, pretty much it. Other than, it's just adding to our resources, adding to when we need them, and then they need us, the mutual aid going back and forth between the two of us.
Mayor and counsel, I would add, when we talk about mutual aid in the case of providing fire protection, if there is some kind of structure fire, ESD 2 doesn't rule without the city of Bastrop, and the city of Bastrop does not rule without ESD 2. Several months ago, when Chief Gill had a conversation with then-Chief Wobus and Chief Altgeld, the conversation was around ESD 2 building a station. And it just seems ridiculous for them to spend taxpayers' money to build a fire station when there is a perfectly good fire station for us to share. Beyond the obvious benefits of mutual aid, there are training opportunities for the firemen that are stationed at the facility, whether they have a city of Bastrop patch on or an ESD 2 patch to train together. So on a fire scene, when you are establishing incident command, and you've already trained with the people you're working on, it only improves our ability to respond and the safety of the firefighters for a lot of reasons. This is a great, I think, example of another partnership. Chief Rosales and Chief Gill are going to establish what we're going to call some operational expectations. As I have said to Andreas, we're married for life. We're going to have a prenup, and we're not getting a divorce. And when we get put in the ground, both our names are going to be on the tombstone. So in order for that to happen, we're going to establish what the rules of engagement are up front, so there just won't be any place to get derailed. And I really appreciate the work that Andreas and James have done with ESD 2 to make this partnership a priority.
Thank you, city manager. I would let the public know that this item, the staff report starts on page 203, and I thought you guys did a great job. There, I can't possibly see a downside. It seems like we're improving response time, we're playing well with each other, we're using an obvious partnership, and I thought you guys did a great job on the staff report.
And I'd like to introduce ESD President for ESD Number 2. It's George Martinez. If you have any questions for the ESD specifically for them, he's here to answer them for them.
George, you're happy with this as well, aren't you?
Absolutely.
I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion?
One thing, Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
I just, I just really appreciate the work on this. One of the hallmarks of this council is reaching collaborative and cooperative agreements with our partners in the region. I really appreciate the work and the ongoing efforts to achieve that.
Sure, and be continued.
I know if I'm ever in an emergency situation, I don't really care what the patch on the side of the sleeve is. I'd just like somebody who's been trained that can take care of me. I'd just like somebody who's been trained that can take care of me. So, I think that's the important thing for all our citizens.
Absolutely.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Rosales.
Mayor, counsel, thank you.
Good job. All right, we're on item nine C. Counsel, you have ordinance number 2018-27 was left at your, at the dais this evening. My eagle eye caught that there might have been a copy paste. We were referencing State Highway 304, and we meant to meet State Highway 95. That's the only change. There's no substantial change. It was just a very, very minor cleanup. Chief Altgeld was trying to see if I was really reading the packet. That's the only reason that that was in there. So, I'm on item nine C. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance 2018-27 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the code of ordinances related to chapter 12 titled Traffic and Vehicles, article 12.05 titled Speed Limits, adding section 12.05.010 titled 25 mile per hour speed zones, providing for the provision that establishes a speed limit of 25 miles per hour in the 1700 block of Farm Street, the 1700 block of Spring Street, and the 1,1100 blocks of CP Johnson Lane, and repealing all prior ordinances that are in conflict herewith. As attached in exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, enactment, effective date, repealer, severability, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the October 9th, 2018 agenda for a second reading. Chief Altgeld.
Thank you, mayor, counsel, city manager. Mayor, I appreciate you covering for my failed attempt to copy a previous ordinance when I wrote one, so we'll make that mistake again. This is after our two work sessions that we had with council discussing the traffic concerns in the neighborhood just east of State Highway 95 and north of Loop 150, and as per your direction, we have went ahead and implemented the ordinance change to make the speed limits in those locations 25 miles per hour. And I have also reached out to the concerned citizens that brought this to our attention several weeks ago and informed them what action we would be taking place. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Council member Jones? And what was their response to that reach out?
Their response was, they were probably a little concerned that it wasn't lower than 25 miles an hour, but when I explained what the 85th percentile was and what that speed was, and that we always have the ability to do another study and lower the speed limit additionally need be, they seemed satisfied with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Chief Altgeld?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from council member Rogers?
A second.
I have a second from council member Jones. Is there any further discussion about lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on these three streets? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Council member Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Chief Altgeld? I'm on item nine D. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2018-89 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract to design the remodel of City Hall to Negrit and Kohler, and if I've, if that's not the right way to pronounce it, I apologize, LLP, in the amount of $60,000, as attached in exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, mayor and counsel. This was part of the discussions we had in the, some of the budget workshops. We're going to take care and finish out some of the unfinished space here in City Hall. We have a preliminary OPC for about 287,000, and this is the actual order of the contract for him to get started on design, for 60,000.
Mayor, you had asked a question about had the city attorney reviewed the document. The city attorney is in the process of drafting a standardized engineering agreement, and all of the agreements that you have approved have not been executed pending the finalization of that agreement, which we hope is...
I expect that the first week of October.
That's right. So, I will not execute the document until Allen is satisfied. So, I have a stack sitting on my desk, waiting for his review and approval.
So, this, this AIA document that's got draft all over it and all these edits, this is, that's not what we're going to sign?
This is what was sent to us, and this is what we forwarded to the attorney. He drafted an engineering services agreement. They're also reviewing this, and will tweak and make something that's standard for all professional services.
This is a hot mess, Trey, with all of the markouts and corrections and everything, and it sounds, it looks like this is a standard AIA contract, but I think I hear the city attorney's intent is to have a standard services agreement that's City of Bastrop standard.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, that makes me think...
This is probably not...
I didn't need to read this AIA document.
Allen is going to review it and is going to standardize the process. They will be resubmitted back to the engineering firms, so that they have what we're willing to sign. And if there's a problem with that, we will bring back any corrections on a later agenda.
So, the resolution 2018-89, what we're really authorizing is to, is we know that we are going to spend $60,000 to have the improvements designed, and the contract is not a part of the resolution, and you're, since we're authorizing you to execute all necessary documents, you're not going to execute a document until it's been approved by the city attorney?
The way that I would suggest you craft this is you read it just like that, and awarding a contract as approved by the city attorney, and read it just like it is, because until Allen tells me it's okay to sign, I'm not signing it.
Counsel, does that, are you comfortable with the conversation? Council member Rogers?
And this is just for the design itself, the $60,000?
Yes.
That's my comment, thought, too. $60,000 just to redesign an existing building?
So, there's quite a bit of AC work, electrical, IT, walls need to be built. It's completely unfinished space there in City Hall.
Well, I understand there's a lot of construction, I just don't understand the cost of the design itself.
Yeah, I...
It's high.
Yes, okay.
Well, I, the cost estimate on the construction is just under $300,000.
Correct. So, this, this is about 347, 658 total, which is under our budget for 350.
Okay, but I thought that the construction is 287, and the 347 is including the design.
Correct.
So, where I'm going is, if the construction cost is $287,000, somewhere between 15 and 20% is, is not completely out of the ballpark.
Correct.
And that stays within our budget that we, that's in the...
And I think that's what you're saying, is the 280 plus the 60 gets us to the 340, and we're at 347, and the budget was 350.
That's correct. Now, that's their preliminary OPC, which is opinion of probable cost, but tonight the contract is only for the 60,000 due to design work, so nobody's confused.
And please understand, it's my understanding that they're going to help manage the contract and all that goes with that.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's bid.
So, it's design and bid and construction management?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
That's a different story.
Well, that makes it feel a little bit better than just the design.
And honestly, and I'm sorry that I'm calling the AIA standard contract a hot mess, but this was, with all of the markups and the smaller font, it was really hard to read and figure out what was in it. So, that is very helpful, I think, for all of us, to know that it is design, bid documents, construction management.
Yes, yes, correct.
Whole deal.
Yeah, that's very, that's, that's why I'm...
Okay. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Joe?
I move to approve.
A second. And city manager, do we need council member Ennis to move to approve with any specific verbiage?
That was my question, yeah.
You can, or just know that until Allen tells me this is what you can sign, I'm not touching it. And I'm not kidding you when I tell you I have a stack on my desk that will sit there until he does. But it's perfectly fine to ask for a friendly amendment and say, awarding a contract subject to approval by the city attorney.
Council member Ennis, are you amenable to that?
I amend my motion to include that.
I have a motion from council member Ennis, I have a second from council member Rogers. Is there any further discussion?
Second was from council member Jones.
Oh, the second was Mayor Protim Nelson?
No.
No, it was from council member Jones. Ah, I didn't write them, I usually write y'all's names down, and I was worried about the verbiage for it. So, we have a friendly amendment from council member Ennis, and council member Jones, are you okay with that amendment?
Second.
And a friendly second from council member Jones. Any further discussion?
No, thanks. I would, I would like it for it to say that it's going to be more than just the design, whatever it goes through.
I can take care of that.
Do you want that, ask council member Ennis to make an amendment for that as well? Will you?
Certainly.
Okay. Council member Anis, why don't you restate your motion, so we're all clear?
I move to approve resolution R 2018-89 for the city manager to sign the contract after it has been approved by our city attorney, and the contract shall include design, Trey, what else?
Bid, bid doc...
Bid documents.
Correct.
And construction management.
Construction management, yes.
Management.
A second. Fantastic. Thank you very much. I have a motion from council member Ennis, I have a second from council member Jones. Counsel, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council member Anis?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. I'm going to end up in trouble with the city manager for this, but if you have a stack sitting on your desk, I, council would like to know what that stack is, because we approve them, and we think they're going, so we might...
We have been patiently, but yet, working on Allen to get them. And so, the only thing I think that's been executed is the wastewater, is that correct?
That's correct. So, the, the, Mr. Borcas has actually added an additional attorney, and they have all those contracts for review, just to make sure they get them done by the first week of October.
So, I'm not saying that it needs to be on the agenda item, I'm just offering that if the city manager would send a list to council of these are the ones that are outstanding, and let us know when they're executed, that would be helpful, because I think council's under the impression we voted on them and that they've been approved, and we may be speaking that to other folks, so we just...
And they have been approved.
Well, but if they're not executed, the vendor would be like, I still don't have a contract.
So, what they've done is you've approved the scope for the amount, we are moving forward schedules and things of that nature. Has there been a lot of design work? Probably not, but those will all be signed that first week, and then we'll have the budget to pay for it.
Okay, then I'm asking for an agenda item on October 9th, that we have the status of all the contracts, and we know if there's any that are still outstanding or not, just so we all know where we are. Okay, I'm moving on to item nine E. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-23 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2018-2019, which is October 1st of 2018 through September 30th of 2019, attached as exhibit A, providing that expenditures for said fiscal year be made in accordance with said budget, providing a severability clause, and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, good evening again. So, just going over the, the highlights of the budget, we are adding new positions, 10.2 full-time FTEs, and these are all of the departments that are being benefited by all of those employees. We also have funded in the innovation and in bond funds, code updates, phase one and two, fiscal impact analysis model, skate park design, capital improvement projects of varying kinds, bond projects to include the street maintenance funding, match for various drainage projects, the old iron bridge structural improvements, and the main street sidewalk and street improvements. This budget also includes the proposed rate increases, the solid waste charges have been increased by the 5% allowed by the third-party provider, and we will also be addressing the wastewater service charge increase of $10. The solid waste charges are, were incorporated within the master fee schedule. And that's it.
Counsel, do you have any further questions for Ms. Waldron? Counsel, I'm sure each of you did, but I went through and reviewed the minor things that I had found in the budget and confirmed that they had all been corrected. I'm sure each of you did that, and our thanks to city manager and staff for making those corrections. We had had a conversation at one time about when we were going to get the bound copy. My, my understanding is that with the vote tonight, then they'll be able to include that, the vote as a part of it, and so, at our next council meeting, assuming that it is approved tonight, we'll have the final bound copy, and I saw fancy tabs and everything, so I know we'll all be walking around with that for the next year. But, yeah, fancy tab, isn't that how you would describe them, city manager? They're, yeah, so you won't have to wonder what page the different funds are. I think it'll be, make that document much more useful for everyone. Do you have any further comments or questions for Ms. Waldron or the city manager?
Mayor, move to approve the second reading of ordinance 2018-23 of the City Council, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2018-2019.
I have a motion from Mayor Protim Nelson and a second from council member Jones. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Council member Anis?
Yes.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
We're moving on to item nine F. Consider action to ratify the vote on the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, which results in more revenues from ad valorem taxes than the previous year. Ms. Waldron?
So, it is state law requirement that a separate ratifying vote be taken if the ad valorem tax brings in more revenue than the previous year.
Counsel, I would encourage you to turn to page 595 of the packet. Ms. Waldron is going to make us redo this until, if anyone's wanting to make a motion, that they do, we do it in correctly and follow the law.
I have it in bold.
Madam Mayor, move to ratify the vote just taken to approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, which will raise more revenues from ad valorem taxes than the previous fiscal year.
Second. I have a motion from Mayor Protim Nelson, I have a second from council member Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Council member Anis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. We're now on item nine G. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-22 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, adopting the tax rate and levying ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2018 to 2019, to provide revenue for the payment of current expenditures, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
And so, just some highlights on the tax rate. The assessed value did go up by approximately 4% from fiscal 18 to fiscal 19, showing that our tax rate has stayed the same for the last four years, and that the effective rate for fiscal 18 was .5534. We are adopting a tax rate of .5640.
Counsel, I would encourage you to turn to page 597 of the packet. Any questions for Ms. Waldron?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .5640, which is effectively a 3.2% increase in the tax rate.
I say it. I have a motion from council member Ennis and a second from council member Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council member Anis?
Yes.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. We're now on item nine H. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2018-26 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article 13.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges, repealing conflicting provisions, providing a severability, providing for an effective date, and move to include on the October 9th, 2018, agenda for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so, this is the ordinance that addresses the $10 increase in the minimum charge. This applies to all residential, multifamily, and commercial customers. This rate increase will be in effect November 1st, so it will... This rate increase will be in effect November 1st, so it will be a part of the November bill that the customers will receive the beginning of December.
So, the payment they make in December is the first time they will pay a base rate of $10 more?
Correct.
Counsel, any questions?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from councilmember Jones.
Just a second.
I have a second from councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? And you said the last time the, the rates were increased, this was real, it was 2015?
November of 2015.
Yeah. Okay. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, counsel. We're now at the bottom of page 4 on item 9I, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2018-28 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2018 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date, and move to include on the October 9th, 2018, Consent Agenda for a Second Reading. Ms. Waldron, Mr. Jobe, and Mr. Hancock.
So, this is a, a budget amendment that's amending the Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund. This amendment is needed due to an internal error when ordering fleet. The original appropriation for the, the said dump truck was in fiscal 17 and had to be re-appropriated in fiscal 18. Staff has spent the time dissected what occurred with the duplication of the ordering of the dump truck, and understands where the breakdown occurred. Going forward, fleet appropriations will be assigned a number that must be present when the purchasing summary is turned in. We have already created our fleet list for fiscal 19, and we've already assigned all those numbers, those have been passed out to staff. Finance will be monitoring this fleet list carefully, all fleet will be ordered as close to 10-1 as possible, so that this, you know, can't happen again. And BPNL has the funds available in their Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund balance to purchase the dump truck, and they have needs for the dump truck. They borrow Public Works quite often. Trey can elaborate on that.
Mr. Jobe, do you have anything to say?
Absolutely. What would you like me to expand on? In specif, specifically, I know you have a question, go ahead.
So, exactly what, what happened?
So-
Now, we have two dump trucks?
Correct. So, there was appropriation of funds in 2017, they carried over into 2018, we found a defect in the process, and two were ordered, so now there's an additional truck. That's exactly what happened.
Councilmember Rogers, once we peeled this apart, the generic dump truck did not allow enough confidence that it went through the system twice. They thought they were dealing with the first one, not understanding that there was two, and the lack of something other than dump truck being the title was the problem. And so, now there is one person in finance, and that's Margaret, who will manage the list, and they will now, once you adopt the budget, just like you would tonight, all of the equipment that's going to be ordered is assigned a number, and that will be put on the purchasing summary, and every department that has a number will be responsible for marking it off. And then, once everybody's gone through the process, Margaret will double-check and make sure that we're only ordering the equipment that is on the list. And the failure was the genericness and the reappropriation. Had we bought it last year, it wouldn't have been a problem, but it had to be re-appropriated, and when that happened, there were internal conversations where one person was having the right conversation, and everybody was thinking they were having last year's conversation. So, it, it was just an era that just consistently got bad. So, there has been some significant soul-searching, including the finance director coming to my office with chocolate, and that's when you know you've got a real problem. Um, while I am disappointed this happened, the mark of a good organization is not that you screwed up, because we will, we, we make errors every day. But what happens when you make that error? And I am very proud of the fact that United, they came to my office, they didn't throw anybody under the bus, they accepted full responsibility for their role, and not only did they bring the problem, but they brought the solution. And I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the concern that they had for the significance of the problem.
Well, it sounds like there was a problem, and we came up with the solution not to have the problem again. Thank you.
Correct.
Councilmember Ennis? Councilmember Jones?
So, I mean, so now we just have an extra dump truck, it's not like they won't take it back, or?
They, they won't take it back, and BPNL can benefit from it, and for any of you that know Mr. Irvin, if it isn't a bucket truck, he doesn't think he needs it. And so, this dump truck is very important, given the amount of infield development and the amount of line extensions that they're doing, and the underground work, and the hauling of dirt. So, if Curtis doesn't think he needs it, both Trey and Curtis does, because they have to schedule his work around theirs, and so, we're now getting busy enough that there really is, there's too much work to share, and so, although it's not a bucket truck, given the growth in Bastrop, it really is an important piece of equipment, that while they didn't order it, they can certainly benefit.
And Mr. Irvin's agreed to accept the dump truck?
Absolutely.
So, this leaves us in an awkward position, because if, if you're not messing up, you're not doing anything, and nobody is perfect. But this isn't one person not being perfect, this, this took a collection of people to allow this to happen. And when we were elected, one of the things that we all promised to do was to make sure that we were very diligent with the citizens' money, because, because that's whose money we're talking about. And this is like making, accidentally paying your rent twice. You know, this isn't a, a hundred-dollar, I, how much was the dump truck?
A hundred and two thousand.
Hundred and two thousand dollars. That, that's, that's a lot of-
It is.
-money. So, the one thing that I want to make sure, it, it makes me nervous, I'm thrilled that you guys are working together and trying to solve it, but I don't like the solution that now Margaret is to, I want to make sure that as you guys all go to different, when there's different people sitting on the dais, we may someday have a different city manager, we need to have something in place to ensure that something like this doesn't happen again. And I don't want it to be person-dependent, because people are imperfect, so, and honestly, I'm amazed with the kind of awards that we've gotten in our financial systems, and for as diligent as you guys are, I would have thought that it, it would have been caught eventually. So, the fact that it made it all the way through makes me a little bit nervous, and I just want to make sure that the solution is not person-oriented.
Margaret is the, is the final, she's not the only.
That's right.
So, we've, we've, we've created the list, I've taken the budget and created the appropriation list, assigned numbers, you know, they're gonna order their equipment as soon as we are out, as close to 10-1 as possible, because that was really the biggest part of the issue, was that we just didn't get it paid, and we had to re-appropriate it. The dump truck was the exact, it was a dump truck, and it was the exact same dollar amount, both, both of them were, so that was part of the confusion. I think that what we've put in place is much more fail-safe, and it, Margaret is the end of the line, she's just the check-check.
Okay.
She's not the only thing.
That's right, but there was never two trucks, correct? There was only ever supposed to be one.
There was one appropriated.
And it, and had it been spent in the year originally, then we, so it was, which that makes me even more confused, because that means you did a special budget amendment to know that you weren't spending the money in 17, and you were moving the money to 18, so it would seem like it would have had additional eyes on it to not allow this to happen.
Oh, well, all eyes were on it, and there lies the problem. And so, it, it just, this is a great example of the lack of processes that exist, and it is one of, of a hundred I could give you today. And, and, and so, the, the life lesson is processes are extremely important, and it's not lost on any of them that this will not happen again.
So, again, counsel, as a policy body, doesn't want to get in the middle of operations, that's certainly the city manager's role, but at, for an item like this, we just need to know process-wise, because we're not approving an ordinance, we're not approving a process, we're approving, accepting, spending an extra hundred and two thousand dollars that, that previously no council had approved the expenditures on, right? That's where we are. We're fortunate that there's a, a good solution for it. I would also think, my understanding is that BPNL has been borrowing Public Works' dump truck, now that we're going to have two dump trucks, which I think now makes us have three dump trucks, correct?
Yes.
You owned one that he was borrowing, and now you've bought two, so that means you now have a total of three. My assumption is that BPNL and Public Works will work together, and yes, it's, one is owned by one entity and two are owned by another entity, but we're all on the same team, and we'll utilize those trucks as much as we possibly can?
We always do, yes.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any further-
How long does it take to, to get this dump truck? I mean, if we, if you moved the money from 17 to 18, I mean-
We have to build them, so it takes about nine to 10 months before they come in.
Okay, well, you moved the money a year ago.
I agree.
So, we still don't have the trucks?
No, we got the truck in August.
Oh, and that, is that when we figured out-
When did the two trucks show up?
August.
So, when two showed up is when we figured out you ordered two?
No, we got, we got one in November, we got the other one in August.
So, say that again, where we can all hit, when did the first ordered truck come in?
November.
November of 20-
2017.
No, it can't be November of 18, because we're not there yet.
Never mind.
November of 2017, you got a truck, and then you got surprised in August of 2018 when the second one showed up?
Is that what happened?
I'm glad it's September, and we're talking about this, and not much longer than that, so I bet there was a, some frantic moments that we may not have had. It, it just can't happen again, and it's not any one person's fault, but we've just got to know that, that it can't happen again. Counsel, any further comments?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
To echo the mayor's comments, I, now that we have them, I, I just want to, to ensure that we optimize their use, as the mayor said, and that, that we utilize these, because they are public resources that need to be utilized to the optimal extent possible. So, I'm glad y'all caught the mistake, I'm glad processes are put into place, and that we're, that we're seeking to mitigate this happening again, but please optimize those resources to the optimal extent possible.
Absolutely, there's, there's a, a need for it anyways, so it'll be used constantly. Thank you.
Terrific. And if it's in the budget, I apologize, do you now have a list of appropriations that it, that you're using as a master list against the capital budget? Is it in the budget, and I, and I don't remember seeing it, or is that inside operations?
Yeah, the appropriations are in the budget, but they might be spread out in all different funds.
Right.
I have created a one-page.
A, a one-page summary?
Yes, for every department, it has a number.
It's an, it's an internal document that we're using.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I move to approve the extra dump truck that showed up by accident.
I have a motion from councilmember Rogers to approve ordinance number 2018-28, and a second from councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Breenus?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, staff, and I'm sure we all look forward to never having this conversation again.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, guys, thank you, guys, for working together and for coming up with a good solution. Okay, counsel, we're on page 5, we're on item 9J, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-24 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the updated service plan, including provisions related to assessments for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, attached as Exhibit A, approving a fiscal year 2019 assessment rule for the district, and containing other provisions related to Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, and the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, and providing for an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so, at this time, the service and assessment plan is not being changed. The only thing that we are changing with this ordinance is the single-family capital assessment, it's going from $338 per lot to $358 per lot, all of the rest of the rates are staying the same.
The 338 to 358 was accordance to the original plans, is that correct?
It's part of the service and assessment plan, yes.
I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, I want the public to know I was going, "Does Lyle need to recuse himself?", and she clarified for me, if he was getting money, he'd have to recuse himself, he gets to pay money, so it's not a conflict. So, that's what I was asking her. Okay, counsel, we're on item 9K, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2018-97 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming board appointments of myself, as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter, as outlined in Exhibit A, and establishing an effective date. The PowerPoint presentation that I put together is included in the packet, and Madam Secretary, I think I, we can, I think you can do it for me, I think we'll be okay, I don't think there'll be a lot of skipping around. So, if we'll go to the next slide, just a quick overview, counsel, thank you so much for participating in the interviews. On September 27th, we interviewed folks who had turned in their application prior to the deadline and were available for that evening. We always want to maximize the number of citizens that we engage, and have our boards reflect our community, and we've addressed, to the best of our ability, any attendance issues, and gotten input on skills needed from some of the boards that have executive directors and/or staff liaisons. If we go to the next slide, you'll see, what I wanted to do was take a moment to break the boards into two different categories. There are boards that meet regularly, some of the boards meet quarterly, some of the boards meet monthly, but they meet on a regular basis. There are three boards that meet as needed, and that, those three boards are the Board of Zoning and Adjustment, the Construction Standards Board, and the Ethics Commission. I, I want to clarify that, because there are folks who were assigned to the Construction Standards Board that didn't meet last year, so there's a need for them to meet if somebody's appealing a building official, or if there are updated codes that need to be done, but they, they don't meet just for the sake of meeting, that's not a good use of anybody's time. If we go to the next slide, I, we're missing a slide. Maybe not, maybe it's at the end, okay. So, let's jump into the, each of the individual boards. Bastrop Art and Public Places, this is a little bit of a strange board this year, because you are all well aware of the fact that we have a cultural arts master plan under progress, and it should be completed in the November-December timeframe. They're gonna make some recommendations, there's a good chance that we're gonna end up with some type of a cultural arts master plan board, and BAIPP may become a committee under that board, so there may be a representative from BAIPP, but they're in a bit of a transition. During that transition, one of their board members, Ed Skarnulis, is an active participant in the cultural arts master plan, so they're, everyone on that board is aware of the transition. I am proposing that we eliminate places 2 and 7, which are currently vacant, I'm making the appointment of Dick Smith to place 8, and Billy Moore to place 9. Billy Moore is a local artist, and he also serves on the BISD Board of Trustees, he lives in the ETJ, and I thought it would be beneficial that as we're leveraging all of the cultural arts master plan, that we would also leverage and have a partnership with BISD, and I thought he could bring that to the table. Dick Smith previously served as the Chair of the Main Street Board, he's very interested in this board, and very interested in the cultural arts master plan, so these are the two appointments that I have made. If we go to the next board, it's the Economic Development Corporation. As a reminder, counsel, legislatively from the state of Texas, these terms are for two years. There are seven people on this board, so one year there'll be three people up for being reappointed, or new members, the next year that'll be, there will be four. This is an even year, so it's, there are only three people that are up. In place 2, I am recommending that we place Jeff- In place two, I am recommending that we place Jeff Hallidania. He lives downtown, bless you, he lives downtown and currently serves as a Vice President of Wealth Management for a major investing firm. I am suggesting that we reappoint Kevin Plunkett to place four, and that we appoint Pat Crawford to place six. Pat was interviewed by council, and she was a charter member of BEDC. Want to point out two things. One, Cam Chavez had, or was, is currently serving on the board, and unfortunately for me, Cam Chavez is my son-in-law, so he cannot be reappointed to the board. I have had council members, board members, and citizens calling me and asking me to please make an exception, because Cam has done such a fantastic job. I am not willing to ask my daughter to divorce him, which is the only way he could serve on the board with me appointing him. So, I look forward to Cam serving in other areas, but that's the only reason Cam is not being reappointed to the board. Councilmember Rogers is also currently serving on the board. We've had conversation before, and the community's been very clear that they don't want BEDC to be a subset of the city council. And last year, you guys made it clear that you wanted me to serve on that board, and so that's why I'm replacing Councilmember Rogers, so that we still have one position out of the seven that is from council, and I am currently the person who is serving as such. If we go to the next board, it's Fairview Cemetery. I am proposing that we appoint Ann Beck. She previously served on BAIPP. She owns property in, owns plots in the cemetery, which is a very beneficial thing, and reappointing both Terry Sanders and Cheryl Long to place four and six, respectively. On the next board, the Historic Landmark Commission, I'm asking you to, I am reappointing Christine Cartwright. She's a representative from the Bastrop Historical Society. Susan Long is an owner of a historical commercial structure. That's the way it was listed today. And in place six, I am proposing that we appoint Janine Witten. She would serve the purpose of general resident, that's the slot of place six, but she, they have a historical building on their property, and she's very involved and very interested in serving on this board. I want to make a note, and I know Ms. Bills and Matt Jones will take care of this, I'm hoping, I'm hoping we're able to do this at the third, she's nodding yes. Place five is a place that is reserved for planning and zoning person, and the Planning and Zoning Board needs to vote and decide who that representative's going to be. If it's at all possible, I would like us to say whoever planning and zoning appoints, we're fine with that, and they will be in place five. If we go to the next board, it's the Bastrop Housing Authority. I will remind you that, again, legislatively, they are only allowed to be two-year terms. The city appoints board members, and that is the end of our responsibility. They are governed by FEMA, have to follow all the federal rules. We simply appoint the board members. I am proposing that we reappoint Jamie McFarland and reappoint Phil Woods. The next board is Hunter's Crossing. I'm proposing that we reappoint Stephanie White, who is a resident, and that we reappoint Mayor Protem Nelson, who serves as the council representative and also happens to be a resident of Hunter's Crossing. The next board is the Library Board. I'm proposing to reappoint Lisa Neese and reappoint Jamie McDonald to place five and eight, respectively. And I'm also suggesting that we reduce the members from nine to seven, and I would propose that we eliminate place seven and place nine, which are currently vacant. If we go to the next board, it's Main Street Advisory Board. I would draw council's attention to the fact that the Main Street Nominating Committee, as part of their bylaws, have brought these names forward. They were unanimously approved by the Main Street Board on July 19th of 2018. That is to appoint Bonnie Coffey to place one, Candace McLendon to place six, and Sean Plesh to place eight. Each of those people, all three of those people were a part of our interview process in September. They're very well-known throughout the community. Candace is new to the community, but you will recall from our interview that she was the outreach program specialist for a statewide county historical committee, so she brings all kinds of knowledge with her. If we go to the next board, it's the Parks Board. I am suggesting that we reappoint Betty Rucker to place one, Jimmy Crouch to place four. He previously served on the Parks Board, and I made my own rule that I wanted people to only serve on one board, which is a great rule, until you don't have enough people to put on all the boards, and then you get to eat some words, and this is me eating those words. And when I called Jimmy and asked him if he would like to serve on the Parks Board, he was extremely excited and really wants to serve on the Parks Board. He's an avid bicyclist and lives downtown and a great outdoors person. Place nine, we're reappointing Jamie Creasy. And while you're eating your words, one of the ways to solve it and not have to eat them again is to, to reduce the number of people on the board, so we'll be reducing that from nine to seven. I propose eliminating place seven and place eight. They are currently vacant. If we go to the next board, it's Planning and Zoning. We had some, Planning and Zoning has nine people. That is by charter, so we cannot change that without a charter amendment. Planning and Zoning is one of the most important boards that we have, and one of the requirements is that you live inside the city limits. The way that it is defined, it's nine, and then there is a 10th person who serves as the Impact Fee Special Member. That person has to live in the ETJ, so that's the 10th person. These terms are for three years. Ideally, every year you would be looking at three seats, but we also had a couple of vacancies. That's why you see so many places on this, on this board. I recommend that we, excuse me, appoint Tom Dawson. He lives in Hunter's Crossing. He was interviewed by council. He would be going to place three. I am appointing Cynthia Meyer is a reappointment to place five. Debbie Moore would be a reappointment to place seven. Debbie is the current chair. I am appointing Greg Sherry. He lives in Pecan Park. That would be the first person on Pecan Park that would be serving on Planning and Zoning, and I, I think it's important that we have folks representing all the different neighborhoods that we have. I am proposing that we appoint Pablo Serna to place nine, and Don Kena to the Impact Fee Special Member, place 10. The reason place eight and place nine are not a 2021 is because they are fulfilling the rest of a term, and we're trying to make sure that every year that there's three people that are rolling off, so to speak. If we go to the next board, we are now into the boards that meet as needed, the Construction Standards Board. I'd like to reappoint Michael Osborne to place one, and reappoint Chase McDonald to place four. Their terms are two years, and they meet as required. The next board is the Ethics. Our ordinance that we adopted earlier this year has five positions. The old ordinance had three positions. We had a person that asked to not be reappointed, and we had a person who moved. So, our new ordinance has five positions and one alternate. I would like to make the appointment of Bernie Jackson to place one, Barbara Caldwell to place two, Tank to reappoint, place three, and Bob Long to place four. I have applications pending for place five and the alternate, although I just found out the person that I wanted to put in place five is geographically undesirable in the, because they do not live in the ETJ, and the ordinance requires that they live in the city limits or the ETJ, so. But, with the four appointments, should we have an ethics issue, that would be a quorum, and they would be able to meet, but it is a top priority for me to find the fifth person and an alternate. The last board is the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Scott Ribichard lives in Pine Ridge in the ETJ. He was interviewed by council, recommending him for place two. I'm appointing Pablo Serna, who was previously an alternate on this board, to serving on the board, and reappointing Bob Rogers to place four. I should have listed this on here, but I need to find an alternate for this board as well. Zoning Board of Adjustments is another board that only has, they are required to have a two-year term, that's why their terms end in 2020. If we go to the next slide, it may be the one I thought was earlier. Yep, that's it. So, in 2017, I had set some goals. I set a goal that we have a revised application, which we have, yay, that's why it gets a check mark, and I had hoped that we would have, you, that you would be able to fill it out online. It's a, it's a box, because we don't have that, but that is a goal for next year, so we haven't dropped it, but I want to acknowledge, and I know that we, we're doing some things with software to be able to...
Yes, and the city secretary has converted that to fillable, and by this time next year, we will have Laserfish set up for that to be an electronic process.
So, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that we had set that as a goal, and we made part of it, but not all of it. We set as a goal to have a board fair, and we had our first annual volunteer fair. We set as a goal to do council interviews. You guys all participated in the council interview. We said that we were going to shift the appointments from June to October, so it would align with not only the budget year, but it would also give any new mayor more than 30 days to try to fill 40 positions, and that we would have a council liaison for each board. And we, you guys did a great job with that last year, and if we go to the next slide, you'll see who the council liaisons are moving forward this coming year. So, I, since I serve on BEDC, I'll be doing BEDC in the library. Mayor Protem Nelson will be on Hunter's Crossing and the Parks Board. Councilmember Ennis has agreed to be on the liaison for BAIPP slash Cultural Arts Master Plan and the Cemetery Board. Councilmember Jones has agreed to keep the Construction Standards Board and the Planning and Zoning Board. Councilmember Peterson has agreed to Historic Landmark, and Councilmember Rogers will be doing Main Street. Just a reminder that we agreed last year that it is inappropriate to have a council liaison for the Ethics Board, for the Housing Authority, and for the Zoning Board of Adjustment. That's why the, we acknowledge that they are boards, but we don't have a council liaison assigned to them. If you go to the last slide, you will see, once again, reiterating that I, I take this very seriously. I've spent a bunch of time doing it, going over all of the applications, and of all of the appointments, of the 38 appointments that I'm making, 29% of them have not served on a city board before. There's 55% are being reappointed, and then the balance of that are people who have served on a board and are being, and are serving on a new board. So, it's, it's a different board, and I wanted to count them accurately. Of the 38 appointments, 55% of them live downtown, and 21% of them live inside the city limits but not downtown, and 24% of them are in the ETJ. I know all of you are familiar with the fact that some of our boards allow residency to be inside the ETJ, and we have varying residency requirements, and, and that's why the 24% is the ETJ. 47% are male, and 53% are female. The city secretary and I are planning on meeting tomorrow. I believe I have board applications completed for all but one person, but I assure you that before they are sworn in, we will make sure that they complete the conflict of interest and that we have an application for them. So, with that, counsel, I am happy to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think I can speak for this council in saying that we certainly do appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this, and we're pleased with the new process that you've, you and the city manager have instituted, and I move to approve all of these, all of these appointments.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis, and a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Thank you, Councilmember Ennis, I appreciate the kind words. I, I think that the council liaisons, we've done a lot of things that I'm really proud of, but having the council liaison, to be able to get to know the staff liaison and know the boards, very important moving forward. One thing that I should have included, that I know we have discussed before, we identified three or four boards that we know we want to have joint meetings with as we move through the next year, and I believe it was the Economic Development Corporation, Planning and Zoning...
Um, all of the boards have outstanding plans or processes, so it's Planning and Zoning. And so, until we get further down in the code review, a meeting won't be scheduled. The Economic Development Corporation is a board that y'all have agreed to meet with. Now that they have a new director, one of the priorities on his list is an updated comprehensive or strategic plan.
Strategic plan, right.
And that would be an opportunity to meet, and I think...
As well as visit Bastrop that we talked about earlier, which we don't appoint those board members, but that would be a joint meeting that we would do.
And contractually, you meet with them in June.
Yes.
And then the other meeting goes around the Cultural Arts Master Plan and BAIPP once the report comes in, in January. So, all of those have not been scheduled, because they are contingent on other things happening. So, once we get closer to those things occurring, then we will schedule those meetings.
I think it would be important for the staff liaisons and the council liaisons to be clear if, if you, like, I, I don't think we intend to have a joint meeting with the Library Board this particular year, certainly not in the first six months, as we're trying to get so many other things done. We ought to be clear so that that board knows when is the next time that they would have a joint meeting with council.
And based on the conversation, the only joint meetings that you will have will be with the four boards that we talked about. And so, one of the things that y'all did indicate is that you would meet on, you would meet with them sometime during the term of the appointment, unless there was some big project that needed to be met. So, an example of something we haven't talked about, the park board's building the skate park.
Right.
So, if there was something that came up that deviated from that, that may cause a joint meeting, but unless it's motivated, y'all made the decision to really focus on the big projects, given the bandwidth of the three things that I've mentioned that would really consume your time.
Absolutely, and I just want to remind not only the staff liaisons, but also council liaison, for example, like the skate park. If there's things that your boards working on that they need council direction, you can, through the staff liaison or yourself, get something on the agenda, and we can take care of it at that time. Are there any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Ennis.
Is it not, am I correct in my understanding that we will have to address the reduction of the numbers on the committees by separate ordinance?
Thank you. I, I had asked the city manager, and she's going to get with city attorney.
Um, the answer to that is yes, and we need to clean up the board and commission appointment, but just the volume of work is bigger than the staff, and it's also bigger than the city attorney's office. If you can appreciate, this is the third agenda where we're well down in the alphabet. So, Allen has brought on a new attorney that came out of the City of Dallas Attorney's Office, has also brought on a paralegal, and never in the history of Allen's career has he had that level of staff. And so, now there are three people permanently assigned to Bastrop, not counting Erin, who is our prosecutor, and the special interests. So, this is a bandwidth issue, just like the contracts we talked about with engineering, the water and wastewater. He's having to staff up, given the volume, and so it's on the list. He and I both routinely talk about it, but there's some other things that we're getting through, but now that we've got Eileen on board, I anticipate that some of that backlog will work its way through.
My question was only for clarity's sake.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilmember Ennis, and there's also, you noticed that I did not even mention the Vision Task Force or the Form-Based Code, because we didn't assign people to those last year, but that is also an, a pending action item that we need to clean up with a, with a resolution. So, we'll, I'm, I'm sure that we'll see that in the coming days. So, but I, the reason I put the PowerPoint presentation together and that I noted what people's terms were, and whether or not we were reducing, was so that you knew that we were reducing vacancies, and quite frankly, I'm trying to get unless it, unless Planning and Zoning is defined as nine in the charter, and BEDC is defined as seven in, in its bylaws and charter, try to get the other ones to pretty much be between five and seven. That was, that was the intent. Any other questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys, very much. I, I really appreciate it, and I certainly appreciate the volunteers that spend really important time and give up their own personal time and make good decisions for the city. Counsel and public, you'll see that Mayor Protem Nelson has... Council and public, you'll see that Mayor Pro Tem Nelson has left the dais. Some of you are... may or may not be aware that he works for the Capital Area Rural Transportation System. He is their chief of staff, and since he has a conflict of interest, he has left the dais for item 9L. He's filled out the appropriate paperwork. As I explained earlier, although I don't vote, I count for a quorum, so we are still at four and a quorum, but it will take three votes for something to be approved. We are on item 9L. Consider action to approve Resolution Number 28-98 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Bastrop and Capital Area Rural Transportation System to provide affordable public transportation services and participating in funding for and provisions of those certain transportation services in the amount of $20,000 as attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Umble.
Mayor and council, Capital Area Rural Transportation System was established in 1979, and it's one of only 39 transit districts in the state. It serves nine counties, 169 communities, and 7,200 square miles. It is governed by a board of local elected officials who are responsible to the Texas Department of Transportation as well as the Texas Transportation Committee... Commission. Karts delivers transportation that's tailored specifically for each one of the community it serves. The service frequency in or to the various locales range from many times a day to once a month. For Bastrop, Karts provides a municipal bus, which is a fixed route service offering regular routes daily that connect neighborhoods and downtown businesses for citizens and visitors. All fixed route services offer wheelchair-accessible vehicles. Multimodal mobility, defined as improved mobility for all modes of transit to integrate the community through connectivity, is one of the council's focus areas supporting the implementation of the city's vision and mission statement. This interlocal agreement with Karts is a cornerstone to this focus area. Thanks to the great partnership with Karts, it's truly impressive that a community the size of Bastrop can offer mass transit as a transportation option. This interlocal agreement is for a period of five years, expiring on September 30th, 2023, with a termination provision of 30 days written notice without cause for a lump sum annual payment of $20,000. As a part of this interlocal agreement, Karts will work with the City of Bastrop to develop and implement a comprehensive transit plan to serve the city and meet council's commitment to multimodal transportation in the future. In addition to the current services, identified elements of this plan include, but are not limited to, the identification and implementation of a second bus service to address the city's desire to increase the frequency of stops, creating what they call a shopper loop, and it really meets the ice cream test of less than 30 minutes that would allow riders access to go to major shopping destinations more frequently and get home before their ice cream melts. The creation of a bus stop at Spring and Main Street. Staff has worked with Karts, staff to design the bus stop, and it is complete. However, the implementation of this project has been placed on hold, pending the completion of the design of the Main Street rehabilitation project. And we also would like to create an annual plan to install covered shelters at bus stops throughout Bastrop. That is a public works function, so we need to establish a schedule and a location so that Curtis can get that implemented in our routine schedule of work. Funding has been provided in fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $20,000 to support Karts for this service, and that same level of funding is included in the fiscal 2019 budget. So staff's recommendation is to approve this interlocal agreement as it supports one of your major focus areas.
Thank you, city manager. Council, do you have any questions?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion, questions, anything? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with three votes. The motion carries. We're now moving on to item 9M. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2018-99 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, supporting the City of Bastrop's participation in the 2019 through 2023 Austin Round Rock Metropolitan Statistical Area Regional Air Quality Plan, authorizing the city manager to identify measures to implement in support of the new regional air quality plan and notify Capital Area Council of Government by October 26, 2018, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date.
Mayor and council, on July 25th, 2017, you approved Resolution R201751, which authorized the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with CAPCOG for continuation and support of the CAPCOG Regional Air Quality Program. At that time, the Central Texas Regional Air Quality Program was in jeopardy due to the governor's line item veto of the 2018-2019 near non-attainment area grant funding in the state budget. Central Texas has relied on the state funding for the last 20 years to support a successful and nationally acclaimed regional air quality program. The city contributed to this program both in fiscal year 2017 and 2018. Continuing CAPCOG's air quality program through 2018 was important to ensure that the region remains in compliance with federal standards and to ensure that we continue to collect and analyze irreplaceable air quality monitoring data. The program includes eight air quality monitoring stations in addition to the two stations maintained by the EPA. Without the air quality program, the Austin, MSA could be declared a non-attainment area, which could lead to increased costs for industry permitting delays, restrictions on industry expansion in the area, as well as increased costs for businesses and consumer, and loss of federal highway funding and transit funding, which could negatively impact the Karts agreement that we have. As noted, the Austin Round Rock Metropolitan Statistical Area, which consists of Bastrop, Caldwell, Hayes, Travis, and Williamson County, has air pollution levels that are close to violating the federal standards for ground-level ozone. The EPA sets federal air quality standards at levels it considers necessary to protect human health and public welfare for harm. Continued compliance with the air quality standards is important to ensure public health, to protect our economic growth, and to address this region's transportation area. We regularly reach EPA standards of moderate or unhealthy for sensitive groups based on our air quality index. We are a member of the Clean Air... the Central Texas Clean Air Coalition, and Mayor Pro Tem Nelson represents the City of Bastrop on that committee. And the committee is charged with the development and implementation of a Clean Air Plan to maintain compliance with federal air quality standards and to develop policies and strategies to guide actions to achieve clean air. So the committee has sent several resolution choices to council, or to the city, rather, to formally participate in the air quality plan. And so we chose the option that gave us until the end of October to determine the best way for us to operationally maintain our fleet, to manage our systems operationally. And I have a meeting on Monday with both Trey Jobe and Curtis Hancock for us to evaluate the options that were provided, and the resolution that you're adopting this evening acknowledges that the city manager will identify measures to implement and will notify CAPCOG by October 26, 18. These measures are operational in nature, and we will do them based on available budget, available resources, recognizing that all of us have a responsibility to clean air. We have a responsibility as a city to be supportive to not only the county but the region, because we will all win together or we will lose together, and the stakes are just too high. So on Monday, we will operationally determine what that is, and we will meet the requirement of October 26.
Council, I received a letter from the Central Texas Clean Air Coalition of CAPCOG on September 7th, and that's what the city manager has summarized for you. We have... thankfully, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson has agreed to be our representative on the Clean Air Coalition, and quite frankly, I can't see why we would have someone participate in the coalition if we aren't going to commit to be a part of the solution. So I would encourage you to approve the resolution.
I, Mayor, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I think it's extremely important after what's happened in Bayer County, which is determined to be a non-attainment, and that we don't want to get caught up without having some sort of say-so in what transpires out of the Travis and Williamson County area that may have a negative impact on us. So I think this decision is well thought out, that the city participates, try to take every... make every effort to ensure that we stay out of non-attainment.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. Certainly appreciate the efforts that you've personally put into making sure we're protected on this. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're now on item 9N. Consider action Resolution 2018-100 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Designating Mayor Pro Tem Nelson as the General Assembly Representative to the Capital Area Council of Government, authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Council, the way this works, and you have... it's included in the packet. I, by virtue of being mayor and the representative to CAPCOG, as was noted earlier this evening, I've been elected to the Board of Directors for TML at the state level, and I'm serving on the Resolution Committee, have become fairly involved with TML. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson is already working on the Clean Air Coalition and already working with CAPCOG. As you go through and see the representatives from other cities, often it's the mayor, sometimes it's a Mayor Pro Tem, sometimes it's a council member. Really, it needs to be somebody who has the time, the energy, the effort, and the fact that they have... that Mayor Pro Tem Nelson also has the skill set is just a bonus. So this resolution would be taking me off as the representative and putting Mayor Pro Tem Nelson on. I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones, a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. Thank you very much for representing us on CAPCOG. The executive session, item 10A. City council shall convene and to close the executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with city attorney regarding legal advice related to the status of the 1445 interlocal agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County for the review of subdivision applications in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. We will go into executive session. We expect it to be extremely brief. Yes, council, I realize it's 9:39, but there is one meeting that we want to just bring you up to speed on. So it is 9:39, and we are in executive session.